Our first parade here as a family together. So it's a real treat. Great way to kick off the season.
The holidays are always a reminder to reflect on what we're grateful for.
This is a wonderful season, a time of joy.
We're very thankful. This is a wonderful time for everybody to get together and be happy.
We want to send everyone a lot of love, a lot of good wishes, wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And God bless you. Stay cool.
This is the most amazing Los Angeles tradition, the oldest one we have here in L.A. So proud to come out here on Hollywood Boulevard. We saved this Christmas parade a few years ago, and thank you.
So excited to see my all-time parade favorite, the General Lee from one of my favorite TV shows, The Dukes of Hazzard. If you can't go to City Hall, City Hall will come to you. That's the idea behind Councilmember In Your Corner, and Mitchell Farrell is taking it to heart. We went along on a recent Saturday morning as he went door-to-door.
This is all about bringing the services of Los Angeles City Hall to the neighborhoods. That's what this has always been about. This is our monthly Councilmember In Your Corner. We're here adjacent to Union Elementary School in Echo Park, Westlake area of the 13th District. We're offering health screenings and dental screenings from Clinica Romero for free. We have sanitation here, we have the census here, Haluna Health, our grid contractor. In addition to just going door-to-door and making sure that constituents know that the city and its resources are available to them for free, including my office, we are also offering these services.
We're here with Councilman O'Farrell's office to do a street cleaning and walk-through. We've seen everything from cigarette butts to broken glass bottles. I think it feels good to just be able to do something positive and clean our streets, and we should do it more often.
What matters to me is what happens in our neighborhoods, and that's why we're here today.
It's good.
Well, that's what I call customer service. How do you bring a community together? A barbecue is one idea, a huge mural is another. In Pacoima, public art piece has become the talk of the town while celebrating Native American heritage.
We're in Pacoima, California, home of the largest above-ground mural in North L.A. in almost 50 years. It's been a true pleasure to be a part of this project and work with nine other artists to make it possible. It's 10,000 square feet. We advanced at almost 1,000 square feet a day to finish the mural in 12 days total, under budget and faster than anticipated, so we're very proud of that.
We are a community that is made up and comprised of all these different elements, things that we don't generally honor as being very special to who we are, but I think these iconic images depicted in this way are really telling a very different story of who we are. Public art is transformative in a city where culture is everything. It helps to really reimagine what our community is, and it's really telling a story about who we are, capturing the imagery of the native peoples whose land we're on, all the different iconic elements of this area. I think it's really special to tell that story and to celebrate it in this way, and this remarkable piece of art is pretty phenomenal.
Growing up in a community that doesn't have a whole lot of public art, doesn't have a lot of amenities or parks or whatnot, you can tend to feel a little bit like people don't care about you. When you get a mural the size of rushing water that's big and bold and beautiful, it tells a different story. You start to feel like somebody cares about you a little bit. They cared enough to paint this mural for you.
I think locals now, when they come home, feel a great sense of pride to be able to be at this wall and no longer have that blight that was once behind me. And again, for visitors as well, it is now an amazing impression of our side of the San Fernando Valley and a great welcome sign.
From artwork to music, a new exhibit at the Grammy Museum highlights a variety of iconic moments and performances from the Latin Grammy Awards' 20-year history, celebrating the accomplishments of Latin artists.
Today we have a very special event at the Grammy Museum. After 10 years of having a very small space, we expanded our exhibit here, which means that Latin music is being perceived as more and more influential, which is great because at the end of the day, we are all a blend of cultures. You can learn about country music, you can learn about jazz, blues, Latin music, all with the same level of respect and same level of intensity.
Well, this is a $2 million investment that we made on the third floor, so it's very significant. Basically, we're now able to tell much greater stories about Latin music. We have new interactives such as our Mono To Immersive, we have a digital interactive timeline of Grammy Awards for the last 62, well, coming on 62 years now, last 20 years of Latin Grammys, and a lot more, so we're very excited. I want people to walk away feeling inspired. I think music is very inspirational, and Latin music in particular is growing much more, much more rapidly than a lot of other genres or a lot of other types of music, so we're very excited that we're able to celebrate that as well. If anybody wants to find out more, especially about our education programs that we have as well, go to gramymuseum.org.
The exhibit runs through spring of 2020. When you hear or see the words "no loitering," what does it mean to you? Well, a new art exhibition paints the picture that loitering isn't necessarily a bad thing. It can actually be beneficial. Anita Bennett explains.
From a cozy tea room complete with herbal tea and handmade furniture to a garden sanctuary, these creations are part of an exhibition at the Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery devoted to all things loitering and slowing down.
The exhibition is inspired by an essay by a poet called Ross Gay, which is called "Loitering is Delightful," and he talks about loitering as one of life's great pleasures. And by loitering, he has a kind of expanded understanding of that, where he talks about being in the moment, enjoying a cup of coffee, slowing down, not buying anything, not working, just being present.
The exhibit features works from 10 emerging L.A. artists tasked with conveying different ways to la-la-gag.
We wanted to think about what loitering means exactly. What is that? It's kind of perceived as a negative thing, but could there be a positive? And who is allowed to loiter?
This interactive installation is made to look like a cozy space, and here there's a hand-embroidered newspaper that's meant to encourage visitors to read, sit down, and loiter. This faux leather biker jacket invokes loitering as a political statement.
This is a sculpture by Ishikolinsky, and it's called Carl vs. King Snake Jacket. So as you can see, it's a monumental leather jacket that brings together different aspects of punk culture and Native American culture. On the base of the jacket, we can see this is a reference to the Tongva, who are the native people of Los Angeles, and so this is a comment on the fact that we are standing on Tongva land, and in fact, we are occupying their land, and we are loitering in our own way. This is an installation by Lauren Davis Fisher, and as you can see, it comprises a plywood platform with a number of kind of plywood objects sitting on top of it. It's an interactive piece, and our visitors are also encouraged to sit and recline on the furniture and enact this idea of loitering.
Established in 1954, the Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery is the longest-running institution in the city devoted solely to exhibiting art. The exhibit runs through January 12th. If you live in Council District One, you won't have to go very far to use city resources. That's because a new district office has just opened its doors, and Councilmember Gil Cedillo was there to welcome the community.
Let us... Today is the opening of our office. It's the first time in the history of the first district that a office is being opened here in the Westlake area. It's important for us to make sure that they have a place, that they feel confident and comfortable, that's convenient and local, so that they can come and bring their concerns to the city councilman, make sure that there's opportunities for them to get engaged in the civic affairs of the city.
I think it's important that the field office happens in Westlake because it's a community that needs councilman services.
Events like this gives the ability to people to know, to find out about all the free resources that nonprofits offer to the communities. We've been in this community for 20 years, and we still find people that don't know that we exist, so it's very important that we have events like this so that everybody finds out about the free services.
Well, the fact that he has not only elected to have a grand opening, close the streets down, and make it a resource fair, giving resources out to the community is very beneficial for the community. People forget, Councilman Cedillo is from the community. He lives in the community, he understands his community, he breathes his community.
It's amazing how much a councilman can do for a district.
Enjoy a holiday light displaying downtown, walk through an interactive digital art installation, and take in a community parade in Echo Park. All this and things to do. Grand Park's Winter Glow returns for its second annual public art display. Winter Glow is an immersive nighttime art experience that takes over Grand Park for the holiday season. As days shorten and darken, the park will celebrate light as a giver of warmth, a source of beauty, and the key component to bringing people together during the fall and winter months. Be sure to get your fill of Grand Park's Winter Glow, happening December 6 through the 25th. For details, visit grandparkla.org. Join the fun at the 52nd Annual Echo Park Community Parade. All are invited to take a place along the parade route and to enjoy the revelry, community spirit, and wondrous merriment that makes the parade a must-see cultural event. Parade floats, classic cars, and spectacular performances, they're all happening at the Echo Park Community Parade on Saturday, December 14. For more info, visit echo park community parade dot com. The latest grand opening on Hollywood Boulevard is the Museum of Digital Illusions. For the first time, Los Angeles has a breathtaking museum of optical illusions for the whole family. This experience is not for the passive observer. Every attendee is a full-fledged participant of 3D paintings created by the artists. Photography is part and parcel of this exhibition that guarantees no one will feel bored. Check out the grand opening of the Museum of Digital Illusions on Sunday, December 15, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For info, visit digitalillusionsusa.com. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. this week.
Good morning, good morning. If everybody would please take a seat. Shhh. Please take a seat. Today is Tuesday, December 10. Want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, let's call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Puscaino, Cedillo, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Kukorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. 10 members present and accorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Bonin moves, Kukorian seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Martinez moves, O'Farrell seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Let's all rise. We'll be led today in our flag salute by Mr. Bloomingfield, if you would. All rise.
All right, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, due to the upcoming council recess, would council like to send all items forth with today?
Yes, indeed.
That then takes council to items one and two, which are items noticed for public hearing.
You have cards?
Yes, there are cards on both items.
Okay, continue.
Items three through 36 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, let's prepare to vote on these items. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for items six and seven will be held over to January 14 unless reconsidered later this meeting with 12 members present.
Okay, I expect we'll get there. Just remind me when it occurs. Continue.
Items 37 through 80 are items for which public hearings have not been held. For item 54, an additional community impact statement has been submitted by the Encino Neighborhood Council. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. You have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
All right, Mr. Kukorian.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we call item 46 special, please.
46? All right, continue.
Items 81 through 86 are items scheduled for closed session. Item 86 was waived from the Budget and Finance Committee and should be held on the desk.
Okay, let's defer though to Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 81 through 86 have all been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation of settlement. Each of those are routine matters which can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, let us move forward. Go ahead. Mr. City Attorney, did you want to?
Yes, we should actually hold item 86. It was waived out of Budget and Finance, so we should only consider 81 to 85 at this time.
Mr. Harris-
My mistake.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Number 36, on behalf of Councilmember Weezer.
We'll have to reconsider that, and we will, so let's deal with this. So let's move forward. Madam Clerk?
Yes, on item 81, in the case entitled Robert Furth et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $550,000 in settlement. For item 82, in the case entitled Robin Tetter versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000. For item 83, in the case entitled John Gerton versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $300,000. For item 84, in the case entitled Alan Ronderos versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $400,000. And finally, for item 85, in the case entitled Leslie Mariscal versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $450,000.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that then takes council back to items called special or general public comment.
Mr. O'Farrell for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am so honored to be able to demonstrate public appreciation for a certain individual who deserves it, and it is former senior lead officer Ben Thompson, who is now Detective Ben Thompson of Hollywood Division, standing with me right here. And I want to brag about Ben and his promotion because he has played an outsized role in improving- improving the quality of life and safety in Hollywood. And I'm going to talk a little bit about Ben and probably embarrass him a little bit because he's a very humble man. After five years in Hollywood, Hollywood Entertainment District Senior Lead Officer Ben Thompson is being promoted to detective at North Hollywood Division, so—the Valley. So you get the benefit of Ben's talents. Ben was born in Seattle, Washington, and moved to the Chatsworth area at age six with two brothers and sisters. This is a whole biography they gave me, Ben. He's a graduate of Cal State Northridge. Ben married to his wife Megan and has two teenage children. You look too young for that, but—
Started early.
Start, okay. He started early. Ben's career with LAPD began at the Los Angeles Police Academy in '08. His first assignment was at Van Nuys Patrol Division. After a year, he transferred to Valley Traffic Division to investigate traffic collisions. Ben was stationed at Pacific for three years, 2011 through 2014, before coming to Hollywood area where he's been stationed for the past five years. And I'm going to pause right there because that's when I met Ben. Hollywood had a recent history of a handful of scofflaw nightclubs where serious crime was happening, assaults. And it culminated in this tragedy at one of the nightclubs where an underage DJ actually was killed on the job in one of these nightclubs. And when we did some deep digging, we learned that a lot of these operators were in violation of their permit. So we had a meeting about all this, and we brought in Hollywood Vice, we brought in Building and Safety, City Attorney's Office, and the Planning Department, and took a look at some of these violators who had many complaints logged over several months or several years. And we began to take decisive action, to either bring them into compliance or shut them down entirely. And so Ben took and played a critical leadership role in making Hollywood safer, and the statistics speak to those successes, but their assaults and Part One crimes are down in the thirty percentile since that time and continue to decline because he has made such a—played such a role in making Hollywood safer. His work ethic, his tenacity, and dedication are practically legendary. You're so young for being legendary. But I think you are. And he's built strong partnerships with community members, city agencies, local stakeholders, organizations, individual businesses, and more. We thank you, Officer Thompson, because the Hollywood Entertainment District is enjoying a significant reduction, as I mentioned, in criminal activity. And just last night, Detective Ben Thompson was with me on two occasions in Hollywood as we met with constituents because he's so dedicated. We've done that frequently. So deserving of this promotion to detective at North Hollywood Division, although everyone in Hollywood will be sorry to see you go, you've helped—you have built the standard. So whoever steps into your shoes really has to live up to your standard, and we're only going to get better. So thank you, Ben, for your incredible service, for exemplifying the very best qualities one could look for in a public servant, police officer, and gathered with you today. We have Captain Scott Williams from Hollywood Division, right over there. Captain, welcome. We have Vice Officer Heather Mota is here. Thank you, Heather. And then Hollywood Neighborhood Prosecutor, another champion for us, Ethan Weaver, is here. So we're all here to celebrate you, Ben, in a little token of our appreciation, right here, to Detective Benjamin Thompson, Los Angeles Police Department, Hollywood Division. Congratulations.
Let's vote on—I believe it was item thirty-six, reconsideration. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we'll hold that item.
And, Mr. President, would you like to reconsider items six and seven at this time, since you do have twelve members?
Okay, let's do that as well. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now let's vote on the items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's move to item forty-eight. So what I'm going to do on this item is we'll start off with public comment. If I can get Tiffany Caldas, April, please come forward. And Audrey Jane. Jane, yes, Tiffany, welcome.
Thank you, council and community, for letting me have the floor. Hello, my name is Tiffany Caldas. I am the Special Projects Manager of Community Coalition. In the past nearly two years that I've worked with Embrace L.A. in this campaign, I have led it on behalf of Community Coalition for a majority of that time, so I'd like to share a couple of reflections of what I've learned these past two years. One, white supremacy will lead us to believe that race and racial equity are too difficult to talk about, that it's messy, and the masses are not ready for this conversation, but that is false. More than 3,000 people applied to be part of dialogue about race and racism through an Embrace L.A. dinner in a matter of weeks. Two, so white supremacy will lead us to believe that even if we talk about these issues, even if we organize about racism and racial equity, that nothing will ever change. This is also false because real change happens when the people in this room, constituents, come together because it's not informed by an election or a bottom line, it's informed by our souls, our DNA, and the historical trauma of what our communities have been through. Three, white supremacy—
Thank you. Thank you. No, it's just a minute each. So sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, April, representing the River Project. The City of Los Angeles is one of the most diverse cities in the world with the majority of its residents being people of color. Despite the numbers, people of color time and time again experience inequities in housing, education, poverty, employment, and environmental health, which a lot of—which causes—with—which in a lot of cases umbrella several of these issues. I believe that the—with an office of racial equity, we can start to fix the deep-rooted systemic problems evident in our city and be held accountable for meaningful change. An office of racial equity would be a step in the right direction for opportunities and resources for all Angelenos. I strongly encourage you all to support the Office of Racial Equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Q.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Q from the Church with our wall, Skid Row, and also with clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice. An office of racial equity is absolutely important because when you look at white supremacy, it's embedded in every aspect of our society. I heard this morning that 400,000 people in this nation are in foster care. When we think about it, I don't even have to look at the numbers to know that the majority of those are going to be black folks, black and brown folks. When we look around the city and we look at construction sites, there are hardly any black folks on the construction site. When we look at the SATs, Lord have mercy, they're saying that the SAT is also biased, and there are folks fighting to stop that and to prevent that. In every aspect of our society, there's white supremacy is showing its head. And even the Attorney General, his father, went after the Black Panthers, yes, William Barr. So I'm saying we need to deal with this issue.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Audrey Jane, and I am the Strategic Partnerships Coordinator at the Korean American Coalition. Community members walk into our office every day asking for help accessing government. Language barriers, lack of cultural competence, outreach, and plain discrimination perpetuate inequities that are hidden by the model minority myth. Because of these barriers to access, bureaucracy has historically worked against minority immigrant communities like ours. This motion will be the start of making bureaucracy work for racial equity. On behalf of KAC and the Korean American community, I strongly urge you to vote yes on this motion.
Please identify yourself.
Thank you Tongva and Fernando Daniel Totavium nations for allowing us to be here on their land today. I am enrolled citizen of the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe. I have a master's degree in Native American Studies and interdisciplinary doctoral degree. The proposed Office of Racial Equity can improve—or increase Native American leadership roles and worldviews important for its success. Native Americans are not a racial group, we are citizens of our respective indigenous nations. Our participation in racial equity adds significant context to strategies and actions that contribute to higher cultural relevancy for all peoples involved. Local tribes consulted—or should be consulted since we are occupying their homeland. Once established, the Office of Equity can address Native Americans represented in census data. Flourishing indigenous cultures adds greater value to Los Angeles. City Council is taking initiatives, and this could help strengthen these initiatives.
Oh, thank you. Please identify yourself.
Hello, sir. My name is Joshua Smith. I am a core member at the L.A. Conservation Corps, and with the time that I've spent in Los Angeles, that I've lived here, I would like to provide some examples of the inequities that I've experienced throughout my life living here. One of them is that I am proud to say that I am the first graduating class of a high school that was rarely known throughout all of California, really. But the beginning, when we first started out, we only had mongolos, we had no funding for barely any uniforms. It was difficult—for us to go throughout our LAUSD system and provide the proper education system that we required. Another example would be the transportation bus systems that I had to experience and deal with throughout living here and going to school and having to deal with different prejudices and inequities while transporting—transporting.
Thank you. Now, please, don't get in line until I call your name, and I'll call everybody's name. So if I haven't called your name, sit down until your name is called. Tencha Espino, Mariana Magana, Pat Lopez, did we get Joseph Quintana, Brianna Bender? Please come up, identify yourself. Yes?
[speaking Spanish]. My name is Tencha Espino. I'm Navajo Dine, born to the Medo people for the Mexican people clan. I come here representing United American Indian involvement. I do want to thank the council for having this meeting today. On this racial equity is very important to our people because it's for our people, by our people. If we cut the lines of division out and we're able to come together and make these plans and these laws up and put into policies the changes, we can make things happen together. Divided, we can't, but together, we can. And who better to do it but us? You know, we're all—we all come from different walks, different shapes of life. I'm an eligibility coordinator where I work at, and I do see the diversity in our people. And it's very—it's very life-changing. I myself made changes in my life through the organization that I'm a part of. You know, I was homeless on the streets, and now I've made changes because of the different people that come together to help us. So I do want to thank you all for having this, and it's very important that we all come together. Thank you.
Please identify yourself.
[speaking Spanish]. Why the Office of Racial Equality? Because all residents need to know that the city works for them. My history, I was born in 1946. My people, Taos Pueblo, we didn't even get the vote until 1947, and we have been disenfranchised ever since. And coming to L.A. and an Indian relocation, the same thing. So it's time for this disenfranchisement to end. Why don't—why don't native people vote? Our history, genocide, racism treaty, we don't—we don't believe that the government works for us, and this office is going to help our community relate better to city government, county government, all government. We need this. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Next, please.
[speaking Spanish]. My name is Joseph Quintana. I'm the Development Director at the largest human and health service provider for American Indians in L.A. County. I am also a mayor-appointed commissioner on the L.A. City-and-County Native American India Commission. Thank you, President, and council members. I grew up five blocks away from here, on Fifth and Spring, at the Alexandria Hotel, one block away from Skid Row. I never imagined or dreamed that I would sit here or stand here in front of people like yourself, working on issues that impact not just the American Indian community, but all people across Los Angeles. American Indians are really the canary in the mineshaft. You want to know how we're doing as far as suicide rates, mental health, homelessness, economic development? All you have to do is look as far as those most disengaged peoples, which are American Indians. And I want to say this, is that we can work together to address those issues. As Dr. Martin Luther King said most pointedly, "The time is right to always do what is right." Thank you.
Thank you. Please identify yourself. Mr. Herman, please. Yes?
Good morning. My name is Mariana Magana, and I'm here with the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights, also known as CHIRLA. First and foremost, we would like to thank Council President Weston and Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, as well as Coco for leading these efforts. We are here today to urge the L.A. City Council to vote in support to create the Office of Racial Equity, ORE, as this office will be the first step towards a better Los Angeles, a Los Angeles that serves our most vulnerable communities, also including immigrants. For too long, our policies have been passed without really looking at the consequences and analyzing how this will affect our most impacted and communities of color, and we know that this office will initiate that conversation, and we as a city must ensure we are proactive rather than reactive. Thank you, and we look forward to continued conversations.
Thank you. Yes, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Brianna Bender. I am a member of Community Coalition. Thank you, City Council members, for giving us this opportunity to speak and share our voices. So I first discovered Community Coalition at the Embrace L.A. dinners, and this was my first opportunity for in-depth conversations about race and racism directly with community members and outside of a college setting. Since I have been deeply involved in our community organizing work, and I've had the honor and privilege of connecting with these community members, who I now call my peers, I come from opportunity, privilege, a good education, and an opportunity to pursue my dreams. That means I'm able to recognize potential when I see it. We have a reservoir of untapped potential in South Central L.A. When we elevate our disenfranchised communities, we elevate everyone, and we all flourish. That is why we absolutely need the Office of Racial Equity. Please vote yes.
Thank you. If I could get Isaac, Brian, Gilbert Johnson, Ken, Rodrigo, and Star Brock, please come forward. And welcome. Just come on up. Identify yourself.
Thank you, Council President. Isaac Brian, Director of the UCLA Black Policy Project. Councilmember Weston, I want to thank you for your leadership on this effort and all efforts while you were Council President. I also want to thank Councilmember Harris Dawson for your co-partnership in this effort. I was here when the Office of Reentry was established for the city. I was here when the Department of Cannabis Regulation was established. I wrote the racial equity report that was cited in the social equity ordinance for the Cannabis—Department of Cannabis Regulation. I know a few things about new departments. The community has worked hard for this. The forefront of this has been led by black, brown, indigenous bodies that have disproportionately been let down by city policies for decades. Establishing this office is a move in the right direction, but an office without a clear mandate, without clear funding, without a strong director, without community involvement, without enforcement mechanisms, is an office set up to fail. And we've seen that in the city time and time again. There are many offices that were established that don't exist anymore, and so today, I want to applaud this effort, I want to urge all of you to vote yes, but I want us to follow through with the implementation. We need a strong director, we need the community to continue to lead this effort, not just today, but going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Gilbert Johnson, and I'm a lead organizer with Community Coalition. I also would like to thank Councilmembers Weston, Harris Dawson, and O'Farrell for their innovative leadership in moving to create the Office of Racial Equity. I have the amazing pleasure of working with some of South Central Los Angeles' most passionate and dedicated residents who are committed to advancing racial and social justice. You know, I get up and I work every morning to provide for me and my family, you know? And I'm going to keep doing it, but I feel like this office will be a really good thing so y'all could overlook, not overlook, but look through certain things that could be beneficial and change some things, you know? Because like y'all say, y'all for the youth. I'm a part of the youth, you know? And we need stuff like this to make it better for us, you know? So we could come up and our kids and us, you know, we could have a better chance at surviving and living. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning. My name is Rodrigo Moreno. I'm a Community Coalition member, and I was born and raised in South Central Los Angeles. Can I get a quick show for everyone who's in the room? Please stand up if you support this motion. Please stand up if you support the creation of the Office of Racial Equity. Take a look, folks. Do the right thing. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Okay, let's get Alexandra Morales, Anthony Lopez, Lynn Moses. Please come forward. Amaka Blue Wakpa. Please identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Alexandra Morales, Policy Manager for Cares in Los Angeles. First and foremost, thank you to Council Member President Weston and Council Members O'Farrell and Harris Dawson for leading the way in ensuring that Los Angeles is a more equitable and a just place for all Angelenos. Los Angeles prides itself in our diversity. We are resilient because of our diversity, and we have strength in our diversity. But with that pride, we have also responsibility to ensure that even the most vulnerable Angeleno feels represented. Here, all these people that are here in this room today, this is a Los Angeles that we know. We want to make sure that day in and day out through the Office of Racial Equity, we are working together, collaborating, to ensure that we are legislating justice and equality so that all of our Los Angeles community members and for generations to come truly and genuinely feel represented. So thank you, and we urge you to vote in support of an Office of Racial Equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you to all council members. Hi, my name is Anthony Lopez, and we need this office, not just for the community, but for every school, for everything. Because I think, I'm pretty sure everybody could relate to this. You always, you want a better community, but for your kids, for your grandchildren, we need this office. Because every day, my sister looked at me and asked me, "Why is the street so dirty in our community? Why is there so many dirty things in our community?" We need this office. We need it.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you to all council members.
Hi, my name is Anthony Lopez, and we need this office, not just for the community, but for every school, for everything. Because I think, I'm pretty sure everybody could relate to this. You always, you want a better community, but for your kids, for your grandchildren, we need this office. Because every day, my sister looked at me and asked me, "Why is the street so dirty in our community? Why is there so many dirty things in our community?" We need this office. We need it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, after Mr. Moses, if I could get Jabar Stroud, Maru, and Eric Previn. Yes, Mr. Moses.
Good morning. Thank you. Do we need an Office of Racial Equity? Probably, of course, we do. If the office is given the function, the tools to function, and it's not just given to some nonprofit just to draw up statistics, we already have laws on the books. But what I am insulted about is that sleazy, marqueezie Dawson's name is attached to this. This person does nothing for our community.
Let's stay on this item.
I am on the item. This-- If I could have the officer's passes--
Officer, please get his materials.
This is an example of police brutality of little gray children on November 16th at 9:00 p.m., handcuffed by scared-for white police officer. These are gray children.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. Please identify yourself.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Jabar Stroud. I'm here as a member of Community Coalition, as well as a citizen of Los Angeles. I'm here to speak out against the social inequity that has continued to entaint our society for far too long. I feel, or I should say, I know it's time to allow citizens of our plagued community to do our civic duties and be proactive in our own public interest, to manifest our own envisioned common sense solution to our own social inequity issues, which government officials have lost sight to overcome and pass on as an enigma. So allow we, the people, to be the democracy we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. So after Mr. Previn, if we could get Cadmell McAdoo, and I'm assuming this is Donna Peirman, and then Rob Quan. Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And obviously, as a public sort of advocate, I'm very for the idea of social equity and political equity, all kinds of equity. And if you'll just take a note at the size of this performance by the public, we are all reduced to nothing, sir. You're the council president. Your co-star, Martinez, is your co-star. Yet why are we invisible? That's not equity. When you cut to even the lawyer, everybody sees what's going on. You say, "What does that have to do with it?" It has to do with disenfranchising the voices of the people. Now, sir, I am for equity, but I'm not for you running it. And where is the financial wherewithal to do this? I didn't see anything in the item. We have a $142 million deficit. I support social equity. I want to be very clear with the people here who are all your friends. You're not the friend of the public, sir, and that is the problem. And that's the problem with this measure. It's a setup. And sir, I got to tell you, I've been watching you for a number of years. It's over.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, next speaker. Please identify yourself.
Good morning, council. My name is Cadmell McAdoo. I, first and foremost, like to thank everyone here, our city council, for taking the courageous step to implement the Office of Racial Equity. I mean, I'd jump right in and say that, you know, equity is the centerpiece of justice. You know, Lady Equity, or I'm sorry, Lady Justice wears a blindfold to symbolize that justice is blind to any disproportionate or unfairness. And I think the Office of Racial Equity supports Lady Justice in that fight to stay blind to-- or to not be blind to injustices in, you know, L.A.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And after Ms. Peirman, if we could get--
Oh, for our friends, Nuri. Okay.
If we could get Mr. Herman, and I'm still looking for Mr. Quan, Mara. Go ahead, Ms. Spindler. I mean, go ahead, Ms. Peirman.
We need to bring people together. We need to bring up the, what? The sameness that we have, the things that we have in common with the white people, brown people, black people, American Indians, what we have. We need to bring together. And when we bring up all this talking about white supremacy, we got a problem because we're causing white supremacy. The white people don't feel that they can speak. They don't feel they have the right to a decision otherwise, it was always called white supremacy. So we need to bring people together. And this needs to be people together. And stop talking about white supremacy. A lot of white people just needs to know that, hey, we all have things in common, especially American citizens. We all have things in common. We all don't want jobs. We all want nice housing. We all want nice streets. And so, and then the people say, hey, let's all get along and say, well, they--
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I demand social equity. I hear in support of the American people's dreams and hopes rather than to be opposed by those who are racist, prejudiced bitches. Because it is my analyst of the problem of staffing a system that will work on the equality for all. But rather, we find in our day and time, like Harris Dawson, the racist Uncle Tom, that the troubling times are here. We will initiate a program that is effective and qualifies all in an appropriate manner to have equality, justice, and the American dream. So I support my fellow Americans and Measure 64, 42 U.S.C., 1983. Fuck you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and after Mr. Quan, if we could get Mr. Spindler and Mr. Greenspan, if he's here. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I do support this motion in theory. I think it's a great idea. I just wonder if we have the capital to invest in an idea like this. Just last year, we created the Human Rights Commission, and I think it provokes a really valid question as to why these two propositions are being housed in different departments, if that's intelligible, and whether or not we have the money to invest in either. We got about half a million dollars for the Human Rights Commission last year. And I would look at this and wonder, with all of our looming deficits due to labor agreements that were jammed through behind closed doors, we don't have the opportunity to explore these ideas. We've seen a really strong progressive streak from our council president recently. I do wonder if tomorrow we'll see a motion to support universal basic income in Los Angeles and maybe an announcement that you're endorsing Bernie Sanders. Whether or not this is all genuine, who knows? In theory, great idea. Let's see it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler and Mr. Greenspan, if you're here.
That's right. So on the art day of all artists. So what are we doing here? Spending more money for nothing. Unfunded racial equality mandates. It started with me proposing that African-Americans get their own social equity. But then they added the Indians. They added the gays. And especially my quizzy Harris Dawson wanted those gays in there in front.
Stay on topic.
So that's why I only want one person colored, covered, is the color of the black first. Put them in front first. Reparations for everybody, everybody, who's a descendant of a slave. $500,000. And Mr. Harris, that suit ain't working for you, bro, today. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Greenspan.
Yes, Mike Greenspan, a 10-2 Florida Gator, UCLA. I still don't. Well, here we go. Wasting more of the taxpayers' money. Don't we have civil rights legislation and everything else? Don't we already have federal regulations concerning these things? Come on, so you got to have another payoff. Hey, maybe we could have the FBI investigate it like the DWP and the city attorney's office. After all, that's been our trend. We don't have enough offices being investigated, so let's get some more, so more people could get investigated. Boy, what a flop at the city attorney's office. You've got 1,000 employees, half are attorneys, half aren't.
Stay on topic.
We are. We're staying on topic. Look what we already have. Years ago, John Walsh had it out with Herb Weston, and Herb asked, "Well, what color?" "Well, it was your color, Mr. Weston."
Stay on topic, Mr. Greenspan.
And just because you're a racist doesn't mean we all have to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment on this item. Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Okay, we'll move into item 49 at this point. This is another one where we have public comments. So we'll start out with the public comment. I'd like to call up Jorge Ramirez, Ron Miller, John Talamoah, Christopher Olson, and Jeff Martinez. Ron, you look like you're the closest, so you come on up and start it. In fact, let's wait a minute, let it thin out a little bit. Let things quiet down. Okay, Mr. Miller, you can start off.
Thank you, Council President, council members. I'm Ron Miller with the L.A. Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. Here on behalf of over 100,000 hard-working men and women, many thousands that work in the oil and gas industry. And I'm here today to urge you to move this report forward to the attorney's office for analysis, just as the report is. We don't want to, we think it's a very good report. The mayor hired an oil administrator to put this report together. We think he did a good job. He took input from everybody, did a good job. And he was such a good oil administrator, he doesn't work here anymore. The governor stole him. So he works for the state of California now. So we think it's a good report. I also have an economic impact report. In fact, let's wait a minute, let it thin out a little bit. Let things quiet down.
Thank you, Council President, Council members. I'm Ron Miller with the L.A. Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, here on behalf of over a hundred thousand hard-working men and women, many thousands that work in the oil and gas industry. And I'm here today to urge you to move this report forward to the attorney's office for analysis, just as the report is. We don't want to, we think it's a very good report. The mayor hired an oil administrator to put this report together. We think he did a good job. He took input from everybody, did a good job, and he was such a good oil administrator, he doesn't work here anymore. The governor stole him, so he works for the state of California now. So we think it's a good report. I also have an economic impact report that was done at the state level that I'd like to give out to the council members that shows the oil and gas industry in the last ten years has contributed thirty billion dollars' worth of construction funds to the state of California, two and a half billion dollars, right here in the county of Los Angeles.
Thanks, Ron. Next speaker. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the city council. My name is Jorge Ramirez. I'm an L.A. City resident, representing the city of Wilmington. I'm also a United Steelworker. I have worked for more than fourteen years to safely produce oil in the industry at the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles, also with, along with seventy-five coworkers from United Steelworkers and California Resources as well. We don't oppose a referral to the city attorney since the city council absolutely needs to understand the city's legal liability and costs. However, we remain strongly opposed to expand setbacks and other restrictions on our local industry that hurt our union workers and families like mine who depend on good-paying industrial careers with benefits. Restrictions on local production also increase prices and make it more difficult for Angelenos like myself trying to make ends to meet without improving anyone's health. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Morning, Jeff Martinez. I work in CRC Thailand's oil field, and we strongly oppose the setbacks to the oil production here in California. So we're hoping that you guys vote against it, and for us, it doesn't make sense to cut production just to ship the oil in to be refined and then sold and then taxed. So we feel California should continue to produce their own oil. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Talamoa. I work for CRC Thailand's. So the oil field's been good to me and my family. I lost, I lost a lot of family to gangs and drugs. My cousin took me, took me to the oil field and showed me that through hard work, you can still make a living out here. Because of that, we, me and my family have been blessed beyond measure. Because of that, I put my wife through school. She's about to get her master's through nursing at Cal State Dominguez. Last summer, we had, we partnered up with a church, Hope L.A., in the city of Watts for a football program. So the oil field has really blessed me and my family to where we're blessing other people too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we could get John Koch, Stu Arite, Mike Williams, Amir Christi Moji Manji. Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Estuardo Arite. I go by Stu. I'm an Angelino. I was, I grew up in south-central Los Angeles. I now live in San Pedro. I'm a proud Navy veteran, and I currently work for California Resources Corporation as an engineer. We are the California's largest oil and natural gas producer. I've worked there for ten years to safely produce affordable and reliable oil in Los Angeles. We don't oppose a referral to the city attorney since council absolutely needs to understand the city's legal liability and cost. However, we remain strongly opposed to expanded setbacks and other restrictions on local oil production. Restrictions on local production also increase prices and make it more difficult for Angelenos to try to make ends meet without improving anyone's health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Michael Williams. I'm a Los Angeles County resident. I also work in the oil industry. I've been working for about fifteen years. We definitely want the report to be forwarded along to the city attorney so that the city can understand the legal liability and costs associated with these measures. Now, as a father of two young children, I definitely understand wanting to have a healthy and clean community, but these setbacks will not do that. These setbacks will not make anyone healthier or improve anyone's health. Instead, it will just raise costs and make the cost of living for everyone more difficult here in Los Angeles. When we restrict local production, it forces us to import that production from other countries and drives up prices. This will not make anyone healthier. So please, we oppose the setbacks and want the city attorney to review the legal liability and the costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning. My name is Christi Monji, and I was born and raised in L.A. County and also worked for California Resources Corporation, the largest oil and gas producer in the state. Since I started with CRC eight years ago, I have been proud to work for a company, thank you, that designs and maintains its facilities with our neighbors, community, and the environmental environment in mind. As an environmental professional, I understand the ins and outs of rules and regulations and appreciate the value and protection that most regulation affords. I strongly oppose expanding setbacks on existing oil and gas operations because it does not provide benefit to the community or the environment, and this action, based on assumptions rather than science, will negatively impact jobs in the community. The council needs to understand the city's legal liability and costs associated with the setback impacts, so I agree with the referral to the city attorney for this analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. And before the next speaker, if I could get Amir Rashan Zamir, Jeff Cooper, Ted Green, Lynn Moses, Kevin Ivey. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Amir Rashan Zamir. I work for California Resources. I've been in the oil field for eleven years. Just wanted to, everybody here uses a form of energy in our homes to heat our homes, move our vehicles. There's a lot, everybody uses energy. So let's produce that energy here at home in California instead of exporting it to other countries. California is most heavily regulated, and the production is done a lot more responsible than other places in the world. It produces a lot of good-paying jobs for a lot of people, and it makes us all live better and a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Hey, thank you very much. Good morning, council, and happy holidays. My name is Jeff Cooper. I'm with Cooper and Brain. I'm part of a family that has been producing the raw material, in this case, I'm talking crude oil, that we all use here in the city of Los Angeles. In the petroleum administrators' report, it was made clear the recommendations implemented in what we're hoping that you'll consider studying would have a substantial taking, physical impact to the tune of ninety-six billion dollars. Given the severe economic burdens that will be placed on Angelenos, we urge you to proceed cautiously and not take detrimental action to working families, like it have come up already here, at a time when many barely make ends meet. Local oil production has served as an economic engine to the city of L.A. for more than a hundred years. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please, and if you'd identify yourself.
Good morning, council. Kevin Ivey. I'm a resident of Westchester and Councilman Bonin's 11th District. My family is part of the petroleum ministry outside of Los Angeles County. While I support the advancement of the legal analysis in front of you, I respectfully request that you not impose a six-hundred-foot setback on new oil operations. If there are issues of living near oil operations in L.A. County, then many parties bear responsibility, including our own land use and zoning regulations, and our own neighbors who consciously choose where to rent and own bear some responsibility. But laying the burden entirely on the backs of the petroleum industry, potentially costing thousands of jobs and revenues, including the jobs of these fellows here today, is not an equitable solution. So for those reasons, while I support the advancement of the legal analysis in front of you, I respectfully request that you not impose a six-hundred-foot setback on existing oil operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Thank you very much. My name is Ted Green. I'm the president and the director of the Los Angeles Royalty Owners Coalition. Thousands of Angelino families receive royalty payments from oil and natural gas produced within Los Angeles. In 2019, royalty owners, including the city of Los Angeles, received eighteen million dollars in payments. For many members, their royalty payments are an essential part of their financial planning for retirement. In fact, many members of the Los Angeles Royalty Owners Coalition are widows who are on limited incomes and have told me they are utterly financially dependent on royalties to pay their bills. The fact is, less than a third of the oil we use each day in California is produced in our state, while more than two-thirds is imported. President Wesson and Councilman Carrats, you both pledged to my member, ninety-three-year-old DeeDee Dolgoff, that you would never take any action to reduce royalty payments in Los Angeles. We're counting on you to keep your commitment. Thank you very much.
Okay, after Mr. Moses, let me get David Hanson, Rudy Rodriguez, Omar Galindo, Zach Strasters, please come up. Yes, Mr. Moses.
Thank you, sir. We must reduce our dependence on fossil fuels, or none of us will be here very shortly, it looks like. However, the people coming before you on this item have, are obviously passionate about making a living for their families. I've lived in Los Angeles all my life, and so many of the policies before this board, don't, don't take that into consideration. Nobody has mentioned today, and no, none of you should even come into this room, how dare you, when we're stepping over people, the homeless. You don't take all the policies into consideration, you don't take the people into consideration. Sleazy Marquisy Dawson putting people on the street, our homeless is, our homeless situation is dire. Take the people into consideration, not just...
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is David Hanson from Local 398. As L.A. continues to grow, we all have concerns about local air quality. I support collaborative discussions and thoughtful next steps in achieving that, but imposing setbacks is not such a step. Please consider people's livelihoods and the economic impacts that would affect our city, including the millions in tax revenues that help provide vital services such as emergency response. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name's Omar Galindo. I'm here with Plumber's Local 78. I represent the working people who will bear the pain of this misguided setback proposal. We work hard every day to make sure everything is up to the environmental standards. The proposed setback does not think about these repercussions of getting rid of all oil and gas production. It only supports getting rid of many opportunities union workers like us have. Where will, where will the ships in the port get their fuel from, or the planes from LAX? Are we going to be shipping in all this fuel from tankers that are electrical vehicles? Are airplanes going to all of a sudden become solar-powered? We still need this fuel, and we still need to have this going, so please, thank you.
Thank you. Next, identify yourself, please.
Hey, good morning. Zach With Arms here once again, and a pleasure to see you guys this morning. Thanks for your time. Hope you're enjoying your holiday season so far. I'm here because it's important that our brothers and sisters in the oil and gas industry continue working. Oil and gas production's been a vital part of L.A. County economy jobs for nearly a hundred years, providing safe and reliable oil production, well-paying jobs, and an affordable energy supply for consumers and businesses. Let's keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, city council members. Happy holidays. My name is Rudy Rodriguez, Sr. I am a, I'm here on behalf of Local 250 Steam Fitters Refrigeration, sixty-five hundred strong, and thousands of working men and women in Los Angeles. While we do not oppose the city attorney's review on petroleum administration report, we want to remind you that impressing a setback will lead to a shutdown of some oil and gas production in the city, which would devastate hundreds of families that will be forced out of work. Please consider our working families as we review this report. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. So if we could get Mr. Spindler, Jose Pina, Mr. Herman, and Gina Barnett.
That's right. That's good. Thank you, fellow oil drillers, especially Bob Bloomingfield drilling for oil every night.
Let's stay on the topic.
Now, we go in, and I pick up the gas from El Suck dildo, and I drive it east to Phoenix, and I put it in their tanks. Why? Because they can pay a dollar less a gallon than you Tucus do. That's right, Mr. Lee. They fucking take and pay a dollar, a dollar thirty less a gallon for the same fucking gas.
Mr. Spindler, let's get on topic.
That's the reason why everybody's mad about this motion. Gil Sedia was mad about this motion. Nury is mad about this motion because they're going to raise the gas prices even more. Nury needs to fill up her four SUVs when she comes to work.
Okay, your time. Next speaker. Identify yourself, please. Yes.
Good morning. Good morning, city council members. My name's Jose Pina with Creed L.A. And it's important that our brothers and sisters in the energy industry are able to continue working. Together, we share the same goal of keeping communities and workers safe and the environment clean. The industry in California is highly regulated and enforced by stringent emission and environmental regulations specifically designed to protect public health and safety by controlling air emissions and odors for people living and working near the production facilities. As we continue to build a cleaner L.A. together, please remember the families that depend on the industry for their livelihood. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get Mr. Herman to come up next, followed by Godfrey Wachira, followed by Mr. Greenspan. Yes, identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. Gina Barnett, on behalf of Creed L.A. As the city looks to decrease L.A.'s dependence on oil and gas, it is important to recognize that it won't happen overnight. Legislating from a place of fear will destroy blue-collar families who depend on the oil industry to support their families and burden all Angelenos with higher cost, all without actually improving the public health. We therefore need to retain the benefits of producing locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Herman.
So what are the repercussions for the legal liability forward for these sites? None. Not one recommendation of your council action other than that fat fuck pepper pig dealing with the color of the law. Yeah, ninety-six billion dollars provides families with jobs, and I'm here in support of all my brothers who want to pump drill and bring that black shit out of the ground so I could drive my Ferrari up and down this fucking city anytime I want. Because when I have to drive down to Arizona and pump for fifty cents less, I'm just fucking wasting my time here with you dumbass motherfuckers. So there is no setbacks. Build homeless properties near these oil refineries, and let's get people back to work, dumbass.
Thank you. So if I could get the next speaker, and if Mr. Greenspan, if you're here, please come up, and after Mr. Greenspan, if we could get Mr. Piedmont Brown. Yes, sir, please identify yourself.
My name is Godfrey Wachira. I'm with Creed L.A. The average wage for green jobs is forty-two percent lower than the average pay for oil and gas production job, and it's thirty-three percent less than the average oil and gas pipeline and construction sector job. So replacing oil and gas jobs with green jobs simply means more people on the streets, a greater demand for affordable housing. It simply means higher income inequality and economic injustices. We've been speaking about social liquidity and all, and I just happen to believe that economic equality, economic justice is fundamental to getting all other kinds of justices. And so I believe that we simply need to protect the oil and gas industry jobs in the city, do all we can, obviously to protect the health of people, but we've got to keep that production going in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Matt. Mike Greenspan. Now, this has always been an oil-based economy. You see the old pictures of the, of oil wells all over the place. We've capped them now, and we've built on top of them. Gee, what happened years ago? They were building the metro and hit a gas pocket on the red line? Kaboom, there it went. So I sure hope as we regulate, we could... So I sure hope as we regulate, we could do a better job. After all, and I know you council members came here today in your big old gas guzzling SUVs, now we're trying to talk about green jobs and environmentalism, and I really want to believe you, but I just can't. But other than that, and, oh, you guys have a great track record. Wow, just look at what happened in Mitch Englander's district over there at Porter Ranch with that gas going all through the air, yes. Now keep regulating and do things like that. Wonderful, wonderful. Gee, where's our city attorney when we need him?
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Piedmont Brown with the ironworkers. We have had a housing affordable crisis, we're having a homeless crisis in our city. As we meet here today, families are struggling to make ends meet, and now it's not time to entertain an idea that would kill good-paying jobs. I would like to ask everyone behind me that would be affected by that, please stand up. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare now to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, it's my understanding that concerns raised about item thirty-six have been satisfied so that we can vote on that item at this point as well. So if you'd pull up item thirty-six. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right. Item fifty-four at this time. We've got public comment, so direct me, you want to do public comment first? Okay, so let's do public comment on item fifty-four. What I will do, I'll call up Mr. Moses, you know he was here earlier, Lynn Moses. Please come forward, Eric Previn. Mr. Spindler.
Mr. Previn, item fifty-four. Item fifty-four, I thought, okay, give me a second, I gotta, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Mr. Spindler, do you want to speak on item fifty-four? Item fifty-four.
You've got the MRCA to Bloomingfield, non, nobody's going to object to that. Of course, it was the MRCA that policed the Sepulveda area near Leo Beck Temple where hashtag scapegoater-in-chief Paul Corretts pinned inappropriately on the homeless population a fire that the fire department never confirmed as being related to a homeless encampment. And now Faubel is left fighting a lawsuit by Leo Beck for an enormous amount of money where we've done nothing wrong and the temple who is cozying up-
Mr. Previn, I don't really understand what this has to do with the MCRA enforcement along the LA River.
I don't understand, sir, because the MRCA is the group that, and I interviewed people, I believe her name is Chad or whatever, they, the origin of that fire was misattributed. The MRCA does a great job, but they got in line quickly and made it so that the LAFD, under the mayor's leadership, made a false proclamation that it was a homeless encampment fire. Now you'll remember to the more recent fire, the Getty Fire, it was a wire-
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spindler.
See, now, Bob Bloomingfield is doing a good job on number fifty-four. Over by the LA River, over in the Third District, they put up signs to this morning to start the cleanup. No more motherfucking tents along the LA River. No more motherfucking graffiti along. Why? Because we're going to give this to the Santa Monica Mountains folks. Now, as you know how they do enforcement, first they beat your goddamn ass, and then they ask questions. Now, if only Marquisy Harris Dawson's plan were being unraveled around the city. That's his policy too. Beat those motherfuckers in those tents and ask questions second. So yes, I support it, thank you, Bob, and thank you, Nury, for cleaning up the fucking ghetto in the valley. Good job.
Okay, to Mr. Moses, okay, Mr. Moses, Joe Macias, Mr. Greenspan. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I rise at the occasion, at the bottom says health, health education, neighborhood parks. Not so much in related to this, admittedly, but, Mr. Wesson, take down the damn fence at La Merde Park. Thank you.
I pass, I'm holding it for number two.
Sandra Napton, Bob Akri, Evelyn Alaman. Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Sandra Napton, and we are a group of the LA River Walkers and Watchers. And we're a group of neighbors that go to the, through the communities of Reseda, Woodland Hills, and Weneka. And we're committed to the preservation of the LA River and its bike path in our area the way it was supposed to be. For the past four years, we've come together to do monthly cleanups and also monitor the bike path on a daily and weekly basis, and we would like for one agency to be in charge. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Good morning, Council members, my name is Evelyn Alaman, and I'm a proud member of the LA River Walkers and Watchers. And for the last two years, well, two years after the bike paths completion, we saw this beautiful amenity and resource become blighted and neglected. In the last few years, we've seen three fires, four beatings, and one homicide. The community no longer feels safe using the bike path, and our efforts to contact the various agencies responsible for it are often frustrated by a lack of response and/or finger pointing. Councilmember Bloomingfield has worked with us from the very beginning to help us find short-term and long-term solutions to the challenges we face. His motion calling for a pilot program that will give us them, give the mountains recreation conservation authority oversight will bring much-needed support to neighbors living near and adjacent to the LA River bike path. We thank him, we thank all of you for this opportunity to return the LA River bike path to its original use and amenity that is safe, clean, and healthy for all to enjoy.
Next speaker. Identify yourself.
My name is Robert Akri, I'm a member of the LA River Walkers and Watchers. My residence butts up against the river, and when it was first opened, it was nice, but now that things have gone array there, we have a lot of drug dropping. Your local growers that grow marijuana, after they strip the buds, all the shake is thrown down there. You have young kids going to school there passing by this. On any given day, you can find twenty needles thrown around. We're looking for one agency, this is a frustration, when we call, it's a lot of finger pointing, nobody knows who's to clean up, so nothing gets done. So we're looking for one agency to be responsible so when we make the call, it'll get taken care of. And I want to thank Councilman Bloomingfield for working with us all this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Joe Macias, and as an LA River Walker and Watcher, we advocate for the sustainability, safety, and maintenance of the LA bike path in our area. I mean, as a taxpayer, and you made a ten and a half million dollar investment, thank you to our council member and to all of you to help, for helping us sustain it and keep it safe for our families. As neighbors and local residents, we are neighbors and local residents who want the LA River and bike path to thrive and volunteers to keep it clean, so we ask the city agencies responsible for its safety and upkeep to see the work through. We want them to understand that as Los Angelenos, we are all responsible for the safety and well-being of our communities, whether it is our neighborhood or not, whether we get paid for it or not. We want the agencies to understand that this is our city and we are all responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman?
So Judge Millen, unless they can provide shelter for all local governments are forbidden from enforcing laws restriction, sleeping and camping, one official will be powerless to assist restrictions lodging valley complaints. Los Angeles, fuck your neighbors, fuck Bob Bloomingfield, fucking racist motherfucker.
Get on topic.
You gotta put people on the LA River in nice condos instead of forcing them to sleep homeless on this emergency crisis that the governor, Gavin Newsom, said, I got six hundred and twenty-five million motherfucking dollars to assist in the urgency crisis of homelessness. But no, you white Uncle Tom motherfuckers want to put regulations to keep people out of the community simply because some stupid motherfuckers shoot the nags for coming in to complain.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield, this concludes public comment on this item, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by thanking the, I was going to say the last four speakers, but the five speakers, not the last one. The folks who came from Reseda, not only for making the trip down here, because colleagues coming down from my district, you could be, you know, three hours in the car just to be here, so for that, but more importantly, for the fact that these folks who were speaking are on the river all the time cleaning up, they're out with a large community group, putting their own volunteer time, their blood, sweat, and tears into making the LA River a wonderful amenity. Now, the program that we're talking about will establish a pilot program, giving authority of the area to the Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority. Currently, the river is the confluence of jurisdictions, particularly in the northern headwaters of the river, of so many different jurisdictions, it makes it very difficult to resolve environmental quality of life issues. The plan will cut the immense red tape and bureaucratic hurdles that currently exist around solving these problems to improve our environment and the safety of the area. The Conservancy Park Rangers already spend some time on the river downstream, and they are fully capable to respond to issues of vandalism, illegal dumping, or different problems that discourage families from using this path. After years of finger pointing and a lack of action, we'll finally have one tested, competent, and trusted governmental entity in the MRCA that would be able to handle the complex issues facing the LA River in the West Valley. It's not going to be easy, but we need to do something bold to help resolve these humanitarian issues and the environmental issues that are there. I've worked very closely with the LA River Walkers and Watchers, these Reseda neighbors that are committed to preserving the LA bike, the LA River bike path on a number of different quality of life issues. And you've heard from them, and you've heard from Evelyn Alaman, Joe Macias, Bob Akri, Sandy Napton, thank you again. They made this, they made it their mission to improve this river. On cleanup walks, they commonly find all sorts of things along the bike path, soiled clothes, vandalized structures, drugs, et cetera. And recently, drug and gang activity appear to have increased in the river resulting in at least one homicide. Additionally, we're talking about the headwaters, so downstream bacteria levels can reach unsafe heights if waste enters the river at the headwaters. Numerous proposals for improving the recreational opportunities along the river have been postponed, including the LA River Master Plan with the ambitious designs for new parks and amenities. In order to make this river work, the community needs to be behind it. In order for the community to be behind it, it needs to be safe, clean, and usable. The investment of tens of millions of dollars in the river is to be heralded. However, to produce the value that we want, these public investments must be planned and include practical solutions to the environmental and other hazard and nuisance issues along the river. Conditions that prevent the public from taking advantage include the perception of unsafe conditions, not limited to public safety, response to incidents, lack of care of the natural resources, maintenance, pollution, illegal dumping, trash, obstructions to the bike path. And one serious and complicating factor for the enforcement and outreach and cleanup along the Canoga Park and Reseda areas of the river is this multi-jurisdiction. There is areas, I can point out, where literally within a couple of feet, you have five different jurisdictions that are all responsible for the same area, and it makes it almost impossible to get things done. We're talking about, we have the US Army Corps of Engineers, LA County Flood Control, Metro, various LA city departments, including Bureau of Engineers, Rec and Parks, Transportation, Street Lighting, LAPD, Sanitation, and others. The River Walkers have all of their numbers written down, and they're always trying to call the different folks who hear, well, the problem with the light is with you, the problem with this is with you, this. We need to have an agency that has a unified jurisdiction that can work with all these other entities, but will also have people on the ground, boots on the ground to help make a difference in real time. As an established and trusted joint powers entity, the MRCA will have the enforcement capabilities that cross jurisdictions. They'll take responsibility for river enforcement in this pilot program, patrol the area, enforce the relevant ordinances, ensure safety, assist with maintenance and operation, reduce hazards, offer interpretive and educational resources, as well as providing additional outreach to unsheltered individuals. As the Joint Powers Authority, their agencies are sworn peace officers, and these officers also have swift water training, EMT, naturalist, wildland firefighting training. It makes sense that they would be the ones along the river. So colleagues, I'm asking that we move forward on this idea. I'm putting money from my own district funds to this, to test this proof of concept. I've tried, in budgets passed, to try to get the MRCA to take jurisdiction of the larger section of the, of the river. Each time, it has not succeeded, the city has wanted to go in different directions. But I think we can do a pilot program in the headwaters, it makes sense to do it at the headwaters. The MRCA is willing and able to do it, and I'm committing resources in my own district and working with the county to make it happen. So with that, colleagues, I ask for your eye vote.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, I just wanted to thank our colleague, Mr. Bloomingfield, for solving a longtime problem with this pilot program, and hopefully it goes well. And I also want to thank the MRCA for being willing to take this on. It's a big bite, but they're a group that are capable of doing it, and I'm grateful that they will, and hopefully this will go very smoothly and will be expanded further down the river. It's a great idea, and thank you for bringing it forward.
All right, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, let's move to item two, Mr. Greenspan. Mike Greenspan, happy Hanukkah, you scab rabbis. Now, let's talk about the preacher pushing liquor, Herb Wesson, Mr. B-O-O-Z-E. Yes, I live in this council district, number two, and I, as far as convenience, as far as convenience, I got Danny's Liquors three tenths of a mile down the street. The other way, two tenths of a mile, seven-eleven. So I don't know how convenient it is, this location is about two miles, so I guess I'd have to go drive in a vehicle, perhaps even after having had a few beers or something. Where's the others I can walk to? Now, who would really benefit from this? Well, of course, our preacher pushing liquor, Herb Wesson, it's convenient for him because he's in the liquor business with Michael Bay of Torrance. So, and I've got stellar qualifications to talk about it. After all, I dropped out of Jewish Sunday School three times from two different scab rabbi synagogues to preach about the, to talk about the preacher pushing liquor. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Previn?
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and here we have another public convenience or necessity for the sale of alcoholic beverages out in CD2 on Victory Boulevard near Van Nuys. So this is right in the area, it's for Kenk Incorporated is gonna get the license, right in the area where we're clustering folks who are experiencing homelessness into some facilities that are on a timeline that's unclear, frankly. I noticed in one of the items that you buried today, I won't let us speak on, that, you know, it could be, we're looking for construction, we're always, everything is being pushed back and delayed. But we just did, Councilmember Corcoran, another liquor license where there was, nobody knew about it, and it was right in that very area near Sherman Way. I just don't understand how we can do that in good conscience, knowing how many people get nailed out there. That is part of the area where cars go fast, people are drunk. I don't know. I think this is a big mistake, and I encourage you to say no.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, let's prepare members to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen i's.
Okay, let's take some additional votes here. So, Madam Clerk, if we could vote on items thirty-eight through forty-five, and also item forty-seven and fifty-two.
And, Mr. President, for the record, on item fifty-two, an amending motion has been posted and circulated. If we could take a separate vote on fifty-two.
Let's remove fifty-two, and we'll go thirty-eight through forty-five, forty-seven, and then what about items fifty-three and fifty-five?
Fifty-three also has an amending motion that has been distributed. We could take a vote on fifty-five.
Okay, so let's add fifty-five. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Okay, now, let's take up item fifty-two. Yes, Madam Clerk, as amended.
Yes, and we could take fifty-two and fifty-three together as amended.
Okay, we'll take up items fifty-two and fifty-three as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Let's move on to items fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Now, if we could vote on item sixty, and could I incorporate item sixty-two and sixty-three?
Yes, you may.
Then let's do that. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Let's vote on item sixty-four at this point. In fact, let's vote on item sixty-four through item eighty. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Let's vote on item one A, Ms. Peirman. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll.
For item one, Mr. President, if I may, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that one B, D and K be received and filed as the fees have been paid, that one J, that the lien be reduced to $4,342.60 and be confirmed, and that the remaining items all be confirmed.
Armando Alcantara, on I think item one H. Armando, are you here? Armando? Rafael Huerta? Please come up, sir. And I think one I.
Good morning.
Yes.
I just want to tell that my house, it's one of the best houses on the street. I would like to have you ride by it before you penalize me. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Armando Alcantara Moscote.
My name is Armando Alcantara Moscote.
Y tuve un problema con una persona que metía vivir a una casa.
I had a problem with someone who came to live with me in my home.
Dijo que reglamos de más de boca, que me iba a dar mil dólares por mes.
We had a verbal agreement. He said that he was going to give me a thousand dollars a month.
Cosa que nunca me pagó.
But that never happened.
Primer mes, me dio seiscientos.
The first month, she or he gave me six hundred.
Ah, segundo mes, doscientos, y así se fue mes.
The second month, two hundred.
Así se fue mes tras mes, cuatrocientos, quinientos.
Sometimes four hundred or five hundred.
Nomás me decía que me iba a pagar y que me iba a pagar, nunca me pagó, nunca.
She said she would pay you, but she never, never did, after that.
Al rato ya tenía, era mecánico y lleno toda la casa de carros y...
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. He was a mechanic, and he brought in a lot of cars.
Entonces yo me enojé y le dije, saca tus carros, saca tus carros, y no los quiso sacar.
And I was upset, and I said, you need to take these cars out of here, and he wouldn't do it.
Fui a la policía, a la primera y Chicago, y les...
I went to the police department on First and Chicago.
Y les dije, y decían que ellos no podían hacer nada, y que ellos no podían hacer nada.
They told me there was nothing they could do.
Entonces ahí mismo está el inspector enfrente de la ciudad, y alguien me dijo, y fui a mirarlo, y él ya había dado varios tickets, cosa que...
And someone told me to go to the city supervisor, and he did that he had already noticed, and that he had given him tickets already.
Yo nunca me di cuenta porque él no me daba el correo, y no me dejaba entrar a la casa, la tenía cerrada.
But I didn't know that because I didn't have access to the mail.
Let me interrupt and say that it's my understanding that this item will be continued for sixty days, that will allow him the opportunity to try to make, work this out with the department and the council office. So this off, this item will be continued until February seventh. No action until then.
And could I ask the speaker?
Okay, thank you.
What's the address or what item number is it?
¿Cuál es la dirección?
De mi casa o de dónde?
You mean my, my home address?
Yes, which, we need to know which item it is.
One H.
H, thank you.
So one H will be continued to February seventh.
Let's hold the item from, which I believe was one I, and vote on the remaining items. Madam Clerk, on item one. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Well, Ms. Donna, we're gonna go to item fifty-six. Come forward on fifty-six.
The HHH housing projects for, we're gonna be having that for the ninety-five thousand refugees that are coming in. We're gonna have that because we're a sanctuary city for all these HHH projects that are done for the, all the young people who come in illegally, and we don't even have a say on how we're gonna keep a track for it. Now we gotta have all that housing for them, and for gang members. Gang members need housing too. So we got a problem with these HHH projects. We never should have passed HHH. They just wanted to come with huge projects, especially when you had the transit projects, they're gonna put great big housing projects along with it, huge big metrossities that will go seven, eight stories, nine stories for the MTA who can allow it. So this HHH is a terrible idea, we should get rid of it.
Thanks, Donna. Wait, wait, wait. Donna, Donna.
Forty-six.
I'm gonna give you, no, 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 I'm gonna give you your one-minute general public comments that are up there. So one minute for general public comment, and then we'll deal with this item. So go ahead.
Oh, damn. I need to find my, I can't find my paper.
Your general public comment.
Oh, I can't find my time, my paper. Can you give me a moment to find my paper and come back? Oh, God, I can't find my paper.
Donna, come on. You have your one minute.
Oh, I can't find my paper. Oh, I can't find my paper. Oh, okay, anyway, what I want to say is, I'll just by memory. Okay, we got problems in Van Nuys, Nury. We, the problem is Bramford and Woodman, they're, the electricity is out, but the places are still paying rent for the places that, that fire was done by encampment, done by the homeless. And our temple is having a problem with heating and cooling. And another problem we have is along Van Nuys Boulevard, there's gonna be no parking because of light rail, and businesses are very upset about not having parking. And that's why we need Van Nuys video conferencing for these people. They said that because we didn't succeed, they gave us a reason to have video conferencing. Please, Nury, listen to me. We need to have Van Nuys video conferencing, all the problems that are in Van Nuys.
Thank you, thank you. Now let's vote on the item. In fact, who's Devon? Do we have a Devon? Come on, Devon. And let's, no more comment on fifty-six, this will be the last one. Item fifty-six. Yes?
Hello there. I initially came in for the item forty-eight, but that already got passed, and relating to fifty-six, it goes with the housing of HHH. I wanted an oversight committee because basically for affordable housing, but I'm thinking this is addressing to, I don't know where this is addressing to, but this will be dire need in the Limerick Park South L.A. residents, since there's a new project coming in off of Crenshaw and Obama Boulevard, and I'm also a South L.A. born and raised resident. But I believe that the oversight committee will be a good help to the community, and that is all. I'll say the rest of my general comment.
Thank you. All right, let's prepare to vote on fifty-six. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Let's bring up item fifty. Yes, Mr. Lee.
Colleagues, I have to formally recuse myself from this item. I have, my wife was in a financial relationship with one of the companies involved with this last year. That contract has since been severed, but I still need to recuse myself for this item.
Thank you. So if you would leave. Let's remove him from the board. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Rob, Mr. Kwan, come forward. Item thirty-seven and forty-six.
And am I gonna have my general as well afterwards?
Yes.
Thank you. For item thirty-seven, we have a routine appointment, but I do think it's worth noting that this appointee has contributed a max contribution to Eric Garcetti. It parrots a long history with Mayor Garcetti. Of his first eighty-four appointees to commissions, three-quarters of them were either friends, donors, former staffers, or endorsers of Mayor Garcetti's election. I think it's also worth noting that Kareem Webb, recently approved by this council, has given max contributions to every single member of the Rules Committee. Turning to item forty-six, we have a hundred percent affordable housing on the table. This is a great thing, and I just wonder, would council have come to this solution years earlier if they discussed this issue more thoroughly in the routine happenings of this council? We really do have a broken council, and I don't mean that as an insult to any of our council members who aren't listening right now. I do think it is pretty fitting that we had a vote last week where everybody's unanimously supported it, even though only one person was outspokenly in support of it. This council has some exceptionally qualified individuals who are extremely capable and smart, but we don't get to hear that enough. The best moments we have in this council are where you actually discuss issues and actually figure out problems. I think that's the biggest problem that we have in these halls, is, you know, we don't necessarily need to throw you all out, we just need to get you to do your jobs. Turning to my general public comment.
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment. Wait one second. Yes, Mr. Kwan.
It was, you know, I was disappointed in the outcome of the ban on developer contributions. Yeah, it would have been nice to see something that aligned more with what I wanted to see on the table, but I really don't care about that. What matters to me is the process, and again, we have a broken process. This council could not offer ten minutes of general public comment on the issue, even though we all sat through thirty minutes of the N-word. For all that you put up a fit over having to hear verbal abuse, think about that. We sat through thirty minutes of the N-word, and we couldn't have ten minutes on ethics reform in these halls. I don't know why we voted for that ban. Maybe Councilmember Rue just needed an ethics merit badge before he returned to the campaign trail, but I do think hearing from the public might help, but really just you talking about these issues. I think if we had two more meetings where this full council talked about reform, we would have come to better solutions that at least half of this body could support.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, now, Madam Clerk, let's vote at this point only on item thirty-seven, okay? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen i's.
Let her speak on forty-six.
Okay, so let's now move into item forty-six. Oh, come on, please be quiet. All right. Alexander Farah or Farrar and Donna Peirman. Yes, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Alexander Farrer with Strategic Actions for a Just Economy. Sage would like to express our strong support for this motion and commend Council President Wesson's leadership on this issue. The motion represents a necessary step to help address the ongoing housing crisis. It is important if this motion, if adopted, apply to all city-owned, city agency-owned and city redevelopment land held on January first. In South Central, we've seen sites like the Bethune Library that are suitable for affordable housing, that have had proposals for affordable housing development and are still being currently held for other use. We would love to see sites like these included. I urge you all to vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peirman?
What exactly is affordable housing? If I were to throw all of my money away on gambling and spending money...
If I were to throw all my money away on gambling and spending money, uh, and I really only had twenty dollars left over, would I, my, went into the, uh, twenty dollars for the ones who don't work at all, don't have any money at all, well, then affordable would be nothing. So, we got a problem is you can't, uh, ask for, you can't prove that you're going to give a one-hundred percent affordable housing. That's impossible because then a lot of people will say they can only afford fifty dollars for rent, and especially with, uh, gas being so high, which I forgot to talk about, and with the, uh, food being cost so much with, uh, gas being so high, then it means less for rent. So, therefore, really, only affordable is very small for a lot of people. So, and people, of course, who politicians can afford a lot, then maybe they should pay five thousand dollars for rent per month. So, one-hundred percent.
All right, thank you. Mr. O'Farrell, I have you on the board.
I signed up for the time. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just, uh...
One, one second. I will do this one time. Mr. Moses, you have a general public comment, um, one minute left that you will get at the end. Please do not disrupt this meeting, but I wanted to explain that to you. Okay, yes, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. So, what I look forward to hearing back are some details on this. We definitely need to utilize city-owned property wisely for the production of affordable and permanent supportive housing, uh, which is why I am still in strong support of the Permanent Supportive Housing Project one-hundred units, uh, on a, an underutilized lot in Echo Park. So, we need to keep exploring that, but what I look forward to seeing in the report that comes back is addressing, uh, the categories. For example, it says here that three percent, um, we're only meeting the three percent necessity of moderate-income households. So, we need to talk about what percentage for very low income, what percentage for moderate-income households, uh, will be, uh, dealt with in, in this, uh, proposal. Uh, and also, we need to discuss issues like what are the long-term lease agreements? What will be the incentives? Will there be, uh, what, what will those lease agreements look like? Will, will there be a uniform, a uniform approach to that? Uh, and also, will the affordability covenants last in perpetuity? So, I think that even with something this simple and as much of a logical approach as this is, um, we're going to look for those, need to see some of those details, um, on the thresholds that need to be met because it's going to probably end up being a little more complex and maybe more nuanced than we imagine with this very simple and basic and just idea. So, those are the things I look forward to seeing, uh, once this motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and, uh, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for those, um, issues that you've raised, but just to clarify, the motion that's before us is not calling for a report. Uh, this calls for a restriction that takes effect on city land three weeks from now. And, um, I'm very much supportive of the objective of the motion, uh, which states, uh, the city should make all attempts to maximize the number of affordable housing units built on city properties. And I certainly agree with that. I just want to make sure that that is in fact what we will accomplish three weeks from now when these restrictions go into place. And since there is no report, and since Housing Committee did not consider this, um, I just wanted to call this special so we'd have an opportunity to consider some of the very issues that, that you just raised. So, I'd like to ask H-Sid and the CIO to come to the table, please. Ms. Hisrick, if we could start by just having you outline for us, um, how it is, if you could outline the process by which, uh, properties of city-owned land are identified for housing purposes and, um, what is, if you can generally describe the inventory of those properties right now, please.
Uh, yes, good afternoon. Helmi Hisrick with the Housing and Community Investment Department. Um, generally speaking, there's two ways that properties have been identified as, uh, affordable housing, publicly-owned land for affordable housing. The first was the housing assets that were transferred to H-Sid from the Community Redevelopment Agency when it was shut down, and we inherited about thirty properties to be developed through that method. And then there's a program called the Affordable Housing Opportunity Sites, which is managed by the CIO's office, and perhaps Yolanda would like to describe it a little more.
Uh, good, uh, good afternoon, Yolanda Chavez with the CIO's office. As many of you know, we, um, identify sites that are owned by the city, um, any type of surplus site, DOT parking lot. We then come to meet with each of you to talk about the site, to see if you're willing to issue a feasibility motion. We then do a feasibility analysis, get a planning report from the Department of City Planning of what can be built on the site. If it's feasible, then we come back to you about allowing us to then transfer the site to H-Sid so they could put it out in RFP for the development of housing.
Okay, so, in a housing feasibility study for a particular piece of property, um, a given property might be feasible to build, um, X number of, uh, affordable units if there is a one-hundred percent affordable restriction, but it might be a different number of affordable units if, uh, the feasibility report studied a mix, uh, for example, of market rate and affordable. Is that right?
Exactly. Or it could be a density bonus or transit opportunity site where you could increase the number of units. Um, to be honest, the market rate density is really about the financing and what the goal of the project is. Because sometimes you want to have in some areas, you want to have a mix of incomes along with commercial. And so, it really depends on the goal of the council office and the neighborhood.
Right.
And the number of affordable units that are already in the neighborhood.
So, in a particular neighborhood, their, a particular council member, a particular, uh, neighborhood interests might include having a hundred percent very low-income housing. Or another council office on a given property might want to have a hundred percent, uh, units available for a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Or another one might decide that they want a mix of workforce housing and very low income. Or another might say that if we allow thirty percent market rate units, we can actually build more affordable units than if it were a hundred percent. Is that true?
Exactly.
Okay. So, given those facts, um, my concern is that if we impose a restriction of a hundred percent affordable, it may very well have the effect of lowering the total number of affordable units that we can produce with city-owned land unless there is some way that we can address those, uh, uh, different aspects of different properties and the different objectives of different council members. Is there some way that we can figure out to address that potential problem? Because it's, I mean, ultimately, it's not the percentage that matters, it's the number of affordable units that matters. Our objective as a city is to maximize the number of affordable units, and if we put a firm restriction on the use of a particular property at a hundred percent affordable, we may get zero built on that property. But if it's fifty percent affordable, we may get two hundred units built. So, how do we, how can we address that problem? What, what would be a way that we could do that?
Well, you know, I would, I totally agree with you. I think the other consideration, as you said, we may not be able to build a hundred percent because a lot of what, when developers reply and H-Sid can address this, they're looking at how they're going to finance the project. What are the options available, right? And restricting something like this, if in, if next year we do not have enough capital funds or operating funds, you may want a mix of income so that the market rate units can cover some of the affordable units if we don't have enough capital subsidies to provide the developer. And so, I would say that the market really drives what developers propose, and you want to be able to give them the flexibility to drive that because they may come up with extremely innovative projects with lots of mixed income. I'll give you an example. I just met with somebody who's working on a project for the first time because I've never, we, we really never do this in the city, where the goal is to do a hundred percent workforce, but between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. So, that is really amazing, and they're doing it without public subsidy, but it's because they, somebody owns the land who's willing to develop this project for that type of housing. And they have opportunity-sown investors that are willing to come in. And so, that's something, it's very tough for the city to develop something like that because we don't have subsidies for that level of income, but a developer being creative can do that. And so, I don't think we want to limit the flexibility for the marketplace.
Right. Uh, that's exactly my point. And so, um, but at the same time, we want to have a hundred percent affordable as our goal. Um, we want to have maximizing the units as our goal, but I, I'm just troubled by the risk that we would lose a project exactly like the one that you've described by imposing this restriction. Are there any properties that are in the pipeline for consideration right now that might be affected if this restriction goes into place on January first?
Well, let me speak first to the projects that are in development, that are in our, in our active pipeline, and then we can also talk about the future prospective projects. So, we currently have thirty-nine projects on publicly-owned land that are in either, we, either they have a development agreement or they are in the process of negotiating a development agreement, or we're releasing them for, for consideration by developers. Of these, one is a mixed-income project, the rest are a hundred percent affordable, except for the manager's unit, in which case, we would like to see an exemption for manager's unit. I think having a presumption of a hundred percent affordable, that is our H-Sid's presumption today, and I think that it's very, uh, helpful to have a presumption of affordability for the public to consider, um, at all times because it does put pressure on the development to be affordable. The one that is mixed income is in Council District thirteen. In that case, uh, the, we have a mixed-income project that the market rate units are paying for replacement parking of a parking structure. Um, had it been a hundred percent affordable, the project would have been financially unfeasible. However, it might have also produced a different conversation around how we address parking. So, I think there is some, uh, if you make a presumption of affordable, of a hundred percent affordable, um, it will drive market decisions. I'm also here with Rick Tonthat, who manages the land development team. I want to...
Okay. So, so, this is a restriction that goes into place on January first, uh, is what the motion calls for. So, would the project in Council thirteen then, or the, uh, projects that have the non-affordable manager's unit be impacted or delayed or potentially subverted by this?
So, that project, the other presumption that was made at the time that we issued that RFP was the presumption of a hundred percent replacement of public parking. If we also have that presumption, then it will affect the ability of the project to move forward. So, depending upon our decisions at the time around things like public parking or other types of infrastructure we want to fund, we would, um, it would have an impact on how we, uh, do the, how the project is financed. I would say that it is possible to do these kinds of analysis upfront, uh, and have the, the city departments come back with a recommendation and an analysis if there's something other than a hundred percent affordable that would be the recommendation. So, we could do this type of analysis early before issuing an RFP if we're working from the presumption of a hundred percent affordable housing.
Okay, my time is way over, Mr. President.
Yes, it is. So, you know, um, I'm going to call on Mr. Bonin. The reason why I introduced this, uh, motion, Mr. Bonin, and the reason why it's so important that we move and we move now is because the way we've been doing things is not really working, it's not working for this city. One of the reasons why the people rise up when they see market rate developments going up throughout the community is because we are not building affordable housing that elevates their comfort level, that we are taking care of them. I think that it's very important that we move in this direction, send a clear message. And in my view, it'll be easier in the future to build market rate development when the communities see that affordable housing at every level is being built. Uh, so, I, I will come back and speak more on this issue, but the time is now. And that's what I will be asking today. Today is the day. So, with that said, Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I heard you there, um, and I seconded this, but I do have some questions and I do have some concerns, uh, coming from the same place and the same intention. Uh, first, before I get to them, though, I want to ask Helmi a very specific question because you talked about the, the, the parking. We have right now, uh, an affordable housing opportunity site that was put out there in my district, the Dell Pacific Parking Lot in Venice, which is a few blocks from the beach. Uh, Venice Community Housing has been working hard on a permanent supportive housing proposal there. Uh, it's one that has been very controversial but is very, very necessary. One of the prerequisites we had for that, uh, in order to make sure we get Coastal Commission approval and to not reduce, uh, parking in the coastal zone, is to make sure that there is no net loss of parking. So, their proposal is going to have stacked parking and stuff like that and not reduce any parking. Would, would, would this policy then kill that project because of the requirement that it keep the, the amount of, of, uh, parking?
No, this project, this recommendation is consistent with the way that deal is structured. So, that deal is a hundred percent affordable. The challenge that we face is that the, that the hundred percent affordable presumption has slowed down the ability to finance it because we have to find financing for replacement parking.
Right. Okay. That I'd need to just make sure of because if it killed the project, that would have been a real problem. I, I just want to, I want to tease out something, um, uh, because we, we just had this discussion about the, the way that sometimes you, you need in order to incentivize a private developer to build something, you may need to have some, some market rate housing. I actually want to look at this from a different perspective. I want to look at it from a, uh, from a, from a progressive and a social democratic perspective. Because around the country lately, affordable housing activists, progressive thinkers, activists, uh, have been rallying around the idea of social housing, uh, which is, uh, used in, in Finland and places throughout Europe. Uh, it has been endorsed by People's Action and, and coalitions of, of large numbers of affordable housing groups right here in Los Angeles. And the idea behind social housing is that the government, um, rather than having a private developer build it, the government will build it, uh, does the capital cost, and then uses the, the, the rent that comes in, uh, as a way to, uh, make the, the project work. May hire an outside management firm or may manage it itself. Uh, and most of the units are, uh, affordable, many deeply affordable, uh, but in some cases, uh, they actually have market rate units which help subsidize the deep subsidy for others. Uh, and I believe in Finland, like two-thirds of the population of Finland actually qualifies for social housing. Uh, and it's, I think, an idea that we need to be revisiting here. In January, my staff will be having a, a motion ready, um, January folks, uh, to, to ask the city to, to look at social housing as a model that we should explore. I, I just, I, I'm fine with this today, but if we do pursue social housing, we, we may want to have a different approach to one-hundred percent if it's government-owned and government-financed because that is a way that has been very successful in a lot of different cities in increasing dramatically, uh, the, the amount of affordable housing. And there's a, there's a goal that you could easily, through social housing, get, you know, within ten years, over a million units of affordable housing, uh, in the United States, and I think it's something worth exploring. So, I'll, I'll be, well, he stepped out, but, uh, I'll be okay with this today, but I do think it's a policy that we need to revisit because I think it is going to need exceptions, you know, if we continue on this private development model that I'm less wild about, but if we actually start pursuing, uh, a worthwhile progressive, social, democratic idea like social housing, that, that we need to actually do it to make that kind of housing work here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Uh, next, we have Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, uh, for the, uh, for the presentation, explanation. I really appreciate the spirit and the intent, uh, Mr. President, for those who, uh, support this, and I certainly do. Uh, we touched on projects that are in the pipeline, and I just want to get a little clarification, uh, that anything that is in pre-development or has been identified by the, by a council motion is not, uh, covered by this. Is that correct? Is that correct?
I, I think that is a determination by the council. If something is in the pipeline, I'm, it is our assumption at the department that if we have an existing contractual agreement, that it would not be subject to this. But I think that's a determination that needs to be made by the council and by the city attorney.
All right. Thank you.
And, you know, and just to reiterate, out of 58 projects that H-Sid is working on, only one of them is mixed income. So for the most part, we really have driven the affordable. I would just request that we may want to add language to exclude the manager's units because...
I would be fine with that, and I, anything that would already in the hopper, I think, should be protected. So any language that does that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr., Mr. President. One project, as you know, we're working on is the Slauson Wall, seven acre site, a tremendous opportunity, certainly for affordable, but for also some other housing. And we just don't want to stop that process. You know, the EF5 is out, RFP is going to be going out shortly. And so I just want to make sure that we're still able to proceed in a positive way with that.
Right. And I did not mention that as one of the sites, and I probably should have called that one out. That site, about, when we received it, about two-thirds of the site was set aside for non-housing uses and one-third was set aside for affordable housing. It's our understanding that you're continuing to move forward with an affordable housing program on the one-third.
Correct.
And, and we would continue to negotiate that way.
Thank you.
Mr. Sadio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, I think the question that we are all trying to address is how do we expedite the development of housing in the city? I appreciate the, the efforts to think about what we could be doing in the future, but frankly, with the moment of urgency, we need to deal with problems today about how we can address this question of building housing as quick as possible. Fact of the matter is, as was stated, with city doesn't do, doesn't build housing, developers do. And so the question is, us, the people who create the encumbrances, the zoning, the ordinances, the entitlements, what can we do to expedite that and yet maximize the goal of 100% affordable housing? And so I think, Mr. Kukorian, the goal is to say, how do we accomplish 100% affordability? And how do we do that in a way that allows for also thoughts about the maintenance of the property for today and in the future? Because that's the challenge in terms of much of our housing projects today. The distinction between William Mead and Park La Brea is all about the maintenance over 70 years. And the question of the management, of course, is, is another factor. And so I don't think it's for us to micromanage that, but other, rather than to say, look, the purpose, the goal of this motion is to get us at 100% optimum, a presumption that we will get 100% affordability, but recognizing that the execution of this policy proposal is for your efforts to figure out how we do that, how we accomplish that. Yes, somebody has to be on site. Yes, somebody has to manage it. Yes, there has to be the maintenance and maintenance today and in the future. One case in point, we have 100% affordable units in my district in Chinatown, 123 units, seniors, 100% affordable. Yet on another day, we make a policy about how we're going to pick up trash, and guess what? Up goes the rent because somebody has to pay to pick up the trash. It's that simple. We weren't thinking about how to pay for that. This, or I suggest that, that the way we move forward with this proposal is that we think about all the other ancillary aspects of managing a affordable property that's involved, that you guys tell us how that gets done. And so my suggestion is that we go forward, Mr. President, with this, but maybe wordsmith the language so that it's 100% affordable presumption with the discretion for the department to figure out maintenance, management, parking, other ancillary costs that may come as a product of other departments and, and needs of the departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. I support the, the goal about this 100%, but I'm concerned about some of the practicality, and I want to understand it a little bit better because, and I'm thinking of, we're working with you on the, looking at the, the five parking lots in, in Reseda, of which replacement parking is, is a necessity, unlike, it's not a coastal zone necessity, but it is a, it is a practical necessity. All the lots that are, that are there are used heavily, and we've made that promise to the community upfront, looking at this. So how would this work for something, for, for that? If, if it doesn't pencil out, because I, I know that we're not sure this is going to pencil out at all, if any of these will be feasible. If it is feasible, it'll be kind of on a razor's edge. And I would imagine we might have some mix, certainly of different levels, workforce housing, and potentially even some market housing, because we want to, we want to figure out a way to use some of this land for affordable, because some is better than nothing. So how would, would this preclude us from doing anything, or is this just a sort of first look goal?
So the way I read the motion, it would require that all of the housing built on those sites be 100% affordable. And I think going back to what Mr. Sadio said, it would be great if the department did have some discretion, because when we, when it comes to DOT parking lots, a lot of them need the 100% replacement parking, some of them don't, which is great, but those that do, the housing portion can pay for the replacement parking, right? It's not only for parking for the residents, but not for public parking replacement. So we do need a source, and so understanding that if we're only going to finance 100% affordable, that means we have to have the resources to finance the units. And if you give the department some discretion, then they could figure out based on the capital subsidies, operating subsidies, and service subsidies, right? Because depending on the type of housing, you need a couple of subsidies. It gives you discretion to really figure out how you can make it pencil.
So how, how does that work vis-à-vis this proposal? Is the discretion in there, or do we need to add something to provide that discretion?
I think you would need to add some language to provide some discretion.
What kind of language?
Something such as a preservation of 100%, or I'm sorry, a presumption of 100% affordable with discretion to allow for the management, maintenance, and other requirements of the project, you know? Or as, yeah.
Mr. President, would you be open to that, to that kind of...
Or is the financing?
Amending motion?
Yeah, once we start, we wordsmith this a little bit, yeah, I'm flexible there.
Because, because for me, that's, that's, I'm very worried about the, the lots, particularly the ones that I know of in my district, and I imagine this is across the city. The margins are very thin, and we need to figure out, give you at least, keep the goal here, maybe it's a right of first refusal, the first, the first presumption is, if we can make 100% affordable, we do. And that's, that's the goal. And then if, if that's not there, you have the discretion to pay for some of these other variables through some appropriate mix that you would work out with the council office, keeping in mind that our goal is to maximize units. But I'd like to see us wordsmith that to a way to allow that discretion.
Miss, but you know, may, and we'd, we'd talk a little bit more, maybe that's discretion that you'd want to direct more towards the council, the council, I don't know. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Much, Mr. Sharon, thank you for bringing this motion. I think it's the kind of bold action that we need around the housing crisis that we face. I start this discussion with an assumption that I don't know is, know if it's universally shared, but I want to put it out. And that is that, as a whole, the private sector has failed to deliver the housing that the people who live here need. The, the model of housing as a business, the development of housing and the maintenance of housing as a business, it just doesn't meet the demand. We have people living on the street to evidence that. And so if I start with that, then it says to me, how does the government intervene in a way to either help them do that, or the government can, can do it itself? And so I think the, the notion to me that the people who are in this business are going to say they can't do the business if we change it, that is not necessarily a bad thing. Because if we leave it to them, we'll get what we've gotten, and I, I totally agree with the, the president in that regard. And just on this question of parking lots, just, let's just take that as an example. Because I know they, there's always, every project's different, every project's got a particular challenge. Just on the question of parking lots, could, in the example that Mr. Bonning gave or in other examples of DOT lots that you gave, couldn't that, couldn't that parking be replaced with Measure M local return or SB 1 funds?
Yeah, I think, I think the parking question can be solved in numerous ways. It can be resolved through other sources of funding that are non-housing funding. It can be resolved by reducing the amount of parking. It can be resolved by having other types of transportation incentives on site. So there's many ways to, to address that question.
So, so thank you. And I just, my concern is, I don't want to provide so much flexibility that the assumption, because there's discussion here, the assumption was, the housing project has to bear the cost of the parking. That's an assumption. It does not have to be that way. And I think we ought to start with the assumption that our first goal is to house our people and get to that as quickly as we can, and we figure out the other problems as they come. And, and again, don't have the assumption that the people with housing have to be the ones to pay for the solutions. We can, that's something we can come together and do, do as a city, especially as it relates to transportation.
So maybe, Councilman, the solution is, as the president mentioned, a discretion go to the council. So that as you're looking at the concept of the RFP and what, and what, and then the department can explain to you what it needs to pencil out, then you can make the decision in terms of the flexibility. Because our goal is definitely 100% affordable, but it's more than parking, it's the subsidies that we see where we may end up with a gap if things don't change in Washington in terms of operating subsidies, you know, even for the current units we have committed to today, right? So it's more of not just parking, but all of those subsidies that are needed to make it affordable for people. But, but maybe that's, that's the way to go, that the council have the discretion, so as you see, so if you have five parking lots, you could actually do maybe a mix.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, for one, embrace the thought that we exert control over city-owned property and we put ourselves in the business of producing affordable housing. We haven't, haven't really done that before, but I think that we have the experience now through the HHH allocations and that experience, and then identifying innovative and much more cost-effective ways of producing housing has really informed us that we can do this and we can accomplish this. I also want to, you know, just give a, a bit of a reality check, and Helmi, I'm glad you brought up the Schrader Lot in Hollywood, because that's a project that is a city-owned parking lot that has been in the works for six years, and it's a city parking lot. The first RFP that came back was insufficient. We kind of all agreed that it was an insufficient RFP for the proposals. But then the other one came back, which is really good, and the only way that pencils out is for it to be 50% affordable and 50% market rate. And that is ongoing, and we're moving forward with that. But the Actors Fund is actually raising the money and working with Tom Safran, who is their, their experts at developing affordable housing. So it's not nearly as easy as it sounds. And I, again, this is a six-year project just to get the affordable units that we once thought would be 100% affordable. So we would, we would actually not be doing anything there if not for the subsidy provided and the partnership to also do some market rate alongside that. So I just want to put that out there. And within that, having said that, Helmi, we're, we're good on the Schrader project, yes. I wouldn't want to vote on something today that actually kills the project, but lessons learned from that. And also, I'd want to know what the implications are for partnerships for TOC, SB 1818, and other local and state incentives, how that would inform building 100% affordable on city-owned property.
Almost all of the projects, we do take, maximize the incentives available under both land use locally as well as estate. As an example, the Schrader Lot sought an Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities grant through the state transfer, cap and trade. So, you know, that subsidy, it doesn't actually have, to my recollection, a local subsidy other than the land and the state subsidy.
Right. And then, and then this also begs the question, I think, that we really need to get back in the business of supplying our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which can be a local match. We really need to get back in the action of supplying that fund to the $100 million that it used to, to hold. I don't know where we are with that right now, but that's, that's something that has effectively removed us from the production of affordable housing. And then lastly, the, the parking, the parking preservation presumption. It's, it's important in some neighborhoods and a little less important in others. We know that in Hollywood, we need the parking because we're actually trying to move cars off of the boulevard and into some of the lots that the city owns. So that's a necessary partnership. We also know that, for example, in Echo Park or other neighborhoods, even in Atwater Village, where there are surface parking lots, we're going to have a hard time replacing that very needed parking, and it is very necessary, and not just the neighborhoods I represent, but across the city in most instances, if we don't find the partnerships when we, when we put in place this requirement of 100% affordable. So what I'm saying is, we really are going to have to get in the business of generating other sources of revenue that don't involve private developers that build market rate. So it's something that we are really going to have to focus on, and this council's going to have to deal with that, if, if this is the decision we're going to make. Thank you.
Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of quick points. Mr. Sadio, you mentioned our goal should be to, that we're all agreed to 100% affordability as, as our goal. I would slightly disagree with that. Our goal is to maximize the number of affordable units. That might be 100% renewed, 100% affordable, it might be a different formula. You've argued eloquently often that we need more housing at every point, at every price point, that we need more housing. So by maximizing the production of housing, we may actually be producing more affordable units than by imposing further limitations on the use of land. So it's a nuance, but I think it's an important nuance. Our goal is to maximize the number of affordable units so that more families can afford to live in Los Angeles. That, percentages are not the critical issue. Units are the issue. Homes are the issue. Places where people can sleep instead of under bridges is the issue. And the more of those we have, the more effective our housing policy is. So, and then Mr. Harris-Dawson mentioned the private sector has failed. Unquestionably, the private sector has failed to meet the needs of the people of Los Angeles in, in reaching affordability. Well, if we want to build our own affordable housing, we can do 100% affordable all day long with our own money, with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, with any number of other sources of, of funding that's available. But the truth is, we don't have that money. So the people who build the housing are necessarily going to be people in the private sector who build things. I'm all for building more housing ourselves, but we will never in a million years be able to meet the demand for affordable housing. So the only way we can do this is to make it easier for the private sector to build affordable housing, not more difficult, not create more constraints to their ability to build a project. There could very well be a stick construction project that pencils out for a two-story, 25-unit, 100% affordable building on city-owned property. Great, we achieved 100% affordability. Or we could build a six-story project on that same property that has 100 affordable units and 50 market rate units, and that could pencil out too. Now, which is the better idea? Now, which is the better idea? So I so I think what I'm hearing from everybody and what I think I heard from the council president, and I'll is that if we have the kind of flexibility to achieve the goal of maximizing the number of affordability, the number of affordable units, that would, I think, achieve the policy objective that we're striving for here. And so, Mr. President, if you would consider it, if we could add one simple amendment to to the language that's in the motion, to say that, keep the language as it is about restricting the use to 100% affordable unless the council determines that an increased number of affordable units can be achieved through a different business model.
I would be acceptable to that.
That I think that solves the problem, and it gives flexibility to every member and agency to be able to make recommendations to us so that we can.
But more importantly, it focuses the attention on what is our what is what we want to do, our biggest need, build affordable housing. We do that, and then we've got a little sentence that gives us wiggle room if we think we can get more.
And it also brings the urgency that you've brought to us, Mr. President, the urgency of doing that now. And and so with that amendment, I would propose, and I vote.
Okay. So Mr. Sadio, I'm good with that, or do you want to respond?
I'm 100% good with that. I just wanted to note, Mr. Kukorian, he got the pun. Yes, of course, this conversation is only a subset of the broader mantra that we have a supply problem. And that is, in fact, the case. And while it may be true that the private sector has failed, I think it's also important to know why the private sector has failed in producing. And their argument would be made that the encumbrances brought forth by by this city and by government in terms of developing and then the incredible challenges of nimbyism that confront us, all of us in each of our districts in their own unique and special ways. And so I don't think we disagree, sir. It's just a nuanced viewpoint. Yes, 100%, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. So let's vote on this as amended. Let's open the roll.
Comments? Comments? You amended it.
Open the roll. Mr. Previn, please do not disrupt this meeting.
Could we respectfully request that managers?
Okay. And it's my understanding, I'll let the city attorney, this this amendment would not reopen, but I'll let you say it.
We took public comment on this item. We decided we're fine.
No, Mr. Mr. Previn, one more outburst, and we're going to ask you to leave. On this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Yes, Mr.?
Do you also include the managers?
All of that has been incorporated, yes.
And, Mr. President, for item 86, in the case entitled Ayers Capital Management LLC versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is to expend up to $2,347,413.85 in the form of a credit against future tax liabilities.
Thank you. No speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Thank you. That's approved. Next item.
Council can at this time vote on items 57 and 61.
Those items are now before us, members. Let it's no members on the queue. Public comment has been satisfied? Fantastic. Let's open the roll on these two items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those two items are approved. Sure, let's do that. Let's turn to general public comment. If I can call up to the microphone Devon Williams, Dolores Chavos, Jennifer Blannan. I see it. Higo Garcia, Jer Dante Woods. Ma Cablu, Don Martin, Rob Quan. Rob Quan, last call. I knew he was here earlier. How about Tom Villa? Please come forward, general public comment. You have one minute. Welcome. Good afternoon.
I am a 27-year resident at the Santa Fe Art Colony and faced a more than doubling of my rent. Thank you to the entire city council and especially the office of Jose Wezar for your help and vote for temporary rental assistance. We have dealt with a new owner, the 15 group, who has attempted to raise our low and moderate live-work spaces as much as 300%. They have rented artists and residence spaces to commercial businesses and allowed new non-artists tenants to build illegal and unpermitted interior structures that are against fire codes. The owners' representatives indicated they will keep rents high despite the state rent control law on January 1st. The Santa Fe Art Colony Tenants Association is continuing to hold the 15 group accountable to state law and city ordinances. Thank you for your help in saving our homes and preserving the community at the Santa Fe Art Colony. We look forward to your continued support and also feel it is necessary for the most restrictive designation at our upcoming historic monument.
Thank you. There's Joanne Wright. Please come forward. She'll be followed by Sylvia Tidwell. Let's hear from Joanne first. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Joanne Wright, and I'm running for Congress in District 34. This is District 34, and the reason I picked it is because it's got General Hospital. It has Skid Row, it's got 63,000 or yeah, homeless people, and I have a solution. And nobody will listen to me. I've gone to three deputies, and they all say, oh, that's so great. But you see, General Hospital's been empty for 15 years. Excuse me, pardon me, excuse me, I can't even hear myself talk. It's got 1.3 million square feet of empty hospital rooms that they have a wellness center on the bottom floor. So it's not like they can't use it. One person said it's got asbestos. I said, this is 2019, get rid of the asbestos and put the homeless people there. It is time to stop talking. We have everything we need. We have everything we need in this city. Look at the buildings there. If one developer had decided, well, I'll put up my $5 billion building and I'll get and I'll buy a $5 million motel, which I am a real estate broker and they could do.
Sylvia Tidwell, please come forward.
And we'd have everybody sleeping under a roof.
Ma'am, your time is up. Sylvia Tidwell, please come forward, followed by Julie Arnoff. Good afternoon.
Hello, I am Sylvia Tidwell, and I'm the president of the Tenants Association of the Santa Fe Art Colony, south of downtown Los Angeles. And it was established over 30 years ago with CRA funding and in order to contribute value to the city. I'm here today with many of our 13 artists who benefited from the Emergency Renters Relief Program to express our gratitude for funding that allowed us to stay in our homes. 15 group recently purchased the art colony, and on November 1st, they doubled and even tripled the rents. Mine was increased to by $3,000 per month. When we applied for the rent assistance, 15 group refused to accept our checks and tried to evict us. The city and its partner, the Housing Rights Center, stepped in to compel compliance. The Housing Rights Center, in record time, cut the checks and hand-delivered them to the art.
Julie Arnoff, please come forward, followed by Alberto Retana. Your time is up, ma'am, and one minute per person. Thank you so much for joining us.
I'm Julie Arnoff, and I'm here on account of all of us to thank you so much. Councilmember Nuri Martinez and Jose Wezar. It's made a huge difference to to all of us. For me, I'm on dialysis, I couldn't afford the rent, I don't know where I would have gone, and now I can still remain an artist and and be in my home. So we're very, very grateful to you. Thank you, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alberto Retana? Alberto's not here. How about Daniel? Daniel Ignite? Jaclyn Richardson? Ms. Richardson? Please come forward, followed by Lynn Moses.
I want to thank city council for giving black people jobs. I believe it was city council, but I'm not sure. Also, Chief Moore for getting back people jobs. 2018, 2019 was just a few people. Unfortunately, the people were not able to keep those jobs, and I don't know why. One black girl got a job down in the Alvarado District. She was an excellent worker. I saw her there working, but she had a temper, so they restricted her. Other other people, I believe it was Chief Moore got them some jobs at a drugstore. For some reason, they didn't stay long. I don't know why they didn't stay there long. There are some a few more black people working there, and I hope they'll be able to keep their jobs because of excellence. Thank you for doing that for the black people. It was very kind of you, if that were you, and if that were Chief Moore, it was very helpful. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Lynn Moses, followed by Wayne. Mr. Moses.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Herb Wesson, the stench of hypocrisy is legendary. He has not allowed one single affordable unit to be built in his in his area, in any in his project's area, not one unit. The units you are building are $600,000 apiece, HHH money. Meanwhile, he and sleazy Marqueez Dawson are destroying black businesses by increasing homelessness with evictions with his ridiculous Destination Crenshaw gentrification project. You people in this room, you council people, gave this guy $741,000 for his luxury offices last year, taking the EDD office for himself, serving 5,000 residents a month.
Thank you. Wayne, please come up, followed by Mike Greenspan.
City document. Thank you.
So, yes, let's talk about Nuri Martinez. She is the council president. Why? Because when Holly Walcott did the vote under the charter and you all voted 14 to nothing, she immediately becomes the city council president, effect of that moment. Herb Wesson cannot defer that decision. So sergeants, get that little cigarette-smoking chimpanzee Herb Wesson out of this building and put a new president in, the honorable Nuri Martinez. And finally, I know that Gil boycotted the vote. Bill, Gil don't think Nuri's ready yet, but I can tell you from my days with Nuri in the hood, she was the toughest pimp in the entire valley, and she'll be the toughest pimp right here. Go get him, Nuri.
Okay, Mike Greenspan, please come forward, followed by Eric Previn.
Mike Greenspan, ABW. Anybody but Wesson for Board of Supervisors. After all, just like Englander before him, AB, anybody but Englander. Yes, that kike Englander about a year ago said to Wayne Spindler, you'll be missed by nobody. Well, that really applies to Herb Wesson more than anything. He'll be missed by nobody. Quack, 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 quack. Yes, let's get a wheelchair for Herb Wesson. He's lame. He is a lame duck. And comes next year, we'll have Nuri presiding over the council meetings when Joe is not presiding over them. Yes, he will be missed by nobody, and we'll be glad to see him gone. And I hope he does not win his race for Board of Supervisors so we could have better government in the city of LA and in the county of LA. And one other thing I have to say, up yours, nigger.
Is there a red chief here? Okay, go ahead, Eric, you're on.
My name is Eric Previn, and inside your transportation panel is Gibson Transportation. They are days and like weeks late on providing the invoices that Councilmember Kukorian allegedly put into effect to scan the rich people neighborhood in CD2 so that he could help out with traffic flow. That's bad. And ACOM is in there too, under another panel. You've stuffed this agenda with so many items that by denying a comment on an item like 46 that was substantially changed, because 100% affordable, Mr. O'Farrell's fake suggestion, and up to 100%, which is a complete, there's nothing there, that's just not there. We can do and currently have, council members can control affordable. But what about Watt Companies? What about MetroLand, where Mike Bonin heard it? Watt Companies, 20% affordable on Metro, that's public land. Where are we there? Hill des Solis, they started to bubble up with anger. No, we can't do that. But Mark Ridley Thomas, who wants CD10, who wants it bad, is not going to get it because he stuck Richard Bruckner, the head of development, right on the floor three months after to shove it through.
Red Chief, last call. Is there a C in the in the in the chambers? C? Okay, that concludes general public comment.
Sir, I have a general public comment.
So with that, I do not have a card for you, Herman.
I always sign up on the line.
Please sit down. You're disrupting this meeting. That's your final warning. There's no card on Herman on general public comment. Okay, we'll close general public comment. Madam Clerk, I believe on one eye.
Yes, Mr. President, there is a request to continue one eye to January 28th.
Okay, without objection.
And that clears the desk. All the council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Any announcements, members? Can we all rise for adjourning motions, please? This portion of the meeting will have adjourning motions. Please rise if you're able. Okay, to my left, Mr. Harris Dawson? Adjourning motion.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I ask today that we adjourn in the memory of the great Reverend Edwin Lawrence Williams. He was a man who's up on the screen there, well-known for his sense of humor, his love for our people, and his activism in the community. Reverend Williams was passionate about running his church on 109th Street and Broadway. He's a son of Los Angeles, going through LAUSD schools and our public community college and state colleges. He's a pastor of the New Frontier Missionary Baptist Church there on Broadway, where he was a friend to lots of people in the community and widely known in the community. He was the regular host of our mayor, Mayor Eric Garcetti, at that at his church on several occasions. And as folks said at his service on Saturday, while Eric Garcetti was the mayor is the mayor of Los Angeles and Marqueez Harris Dawson is the councilperson for District 8 and Herb Wesson is the councilperson for District 10, Reverend Williams is the mayor of Broadway. And right now, at this moment, on Broadway and Century Boulevard, you'll see a 35-foot Christmas tree that Reverend Williams demanded that the council office put there if I was able to speak in his church and get his endorsement while I was running. And so that Christmas tree going forward will be named the Edwin Lawrence Williams Memorial Christmas Tree on Broadway every year going forward.
It's a great tribute. Thank you, Marqueez. My left, no others, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Bruce Sarotti. In 19, Bruce was In nineteen, Bruce was born in Michigan in nineteen thirty-six, he was the youngest of Russell and Alverna Sarati's three children. In nineteen ninety-six, the family moved to Northridge after Bruce landed a job at the iconic radio station KABC. He was the marketing manager for many Los Angeles radio stations and created radio campaigns for many grocery chains and major brands. For fun, Bruce took his expert skiing skills and became a volunteer at Mountain High in the Ski Patrol, and his passion for skiing continued through retirement, expertly skiing down the challenging Cornice Bowl at the very top of Mammoth Mountain on his eightieth birthday. After his wife Jean Sarati, a tireless volunteer for many CD-12 charities, passed away following a lengthy battle with cancer in two thousand and eight, Bruce sold his Northridge home, moving in with his daughter Jerry in Santa Clarita. Shortly thereafter, he retired from broadcasting and began volunteering at the Santa Clarita Senior Center, driving a route for their Meals on Wheels program. Bruce remained active in his final years, taking many trips to Mammoth, Tahoe, and the annual Monterey Jazz Festival, which he attended for more than forty years. Bruce is survived by his four children, six grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I wish to rise today and commemorate and honor the life of Dion Neutra. Dion Neutra was born in Los Angeles on October eighth, nineteen twenty-six, to his mother, Dion Neutra, a German-Swiss vocalist and cellist. Dion Neutra, the son of the twentieth-century architect Richard Neutra, a Viennese emigre who came to the US in nineteen twenty-three to work with Frank Lloyd Wright and a practitioner in his own right, who also waged a decades-long war to save his father's iconic buildings from the ravages of time remodeling and demolition. And I'm standing here with his son, Nick Neutra, who I just described my feelings about the late Dion Neutra as an irascible inspiration. He was quite a remarkable constituent of the thirteenth district and an icon of Silverlake. As the sun, as the skyon, rather, of an architectural practice synonymous with the international style modernism, Dion was a link to the generation of twentieth-century architectural titans that included his father, Mies van der Rohe, Lee Corbusier, Marcel Brewer, Walter Groppias, Iiro Serenin, Alvar Alto, Louis Kahn, and Rudolf Schindler. Together, Richard and Dion Neutra exerted their influence upon the built environment and visual aesthetics of Los Angeles for nearly a century. The father and son individually and in collaboration executed hundreds of houses and civic projects. Many of them received laurels from the American Institute of Architects, were designated as landmarks, and made alluring motion picture cameos as Richard Neutra's nineteen-twenty-nine Lovell Health House, the first steel-framed dwelling of a home in the United States, like that was featured in the nineteen ninety-seven movie Hollywood Confidential. Dion started drawing when he was eleven years old, he was motivated in part by a desire to earn allowance money in order to purchase a violin. In nineteen forty-one into nineteen forty-two, he was executing drawings for his father's Nesbit House. By nineteen forty-four, Dion Neutra, a seventeen-year-old junior at Marshall High School, was identified by the Magazine of Architecture as a collaborator with his famous father. After service in the United States Navy during the Second World War, Neutra pursued his architecture studies at USC, graduating in nineteen fifty, following a junior year abroad at the Swiss Federal Institute of Technology in Zurich and a side trip to Paris to meet Lee Corbusier. Neutra then resumed work in his father's firm. Accolades came quickly, a first honor award from the American Institute of Architects in nineteen fifty-four, and an AIA Merit Award the following year. In his later years, Neutra was the picture of an easy-going Southern California retiree who would snazz himself up with a Western bolo tie. He projected a kindly avuncular demeanor but retained the flinty European intellectual core he inherited from his parents. A reputation for cantankerousness and feather-ruffling preceded him, driven by the architect's steel-clad certitude that the Neutra legacy was worth fighting for, and indeed it is. Neutra maintained a studio in his Silverlake home, the Reunion House, designed by his father in nineteen fifty on Neutra Place. From there, he served as executive consultant and project director of the Neutra Institute for Survival Through Design, a nonprofit foundation established in nineteen sixty-two to advance modernist and ecological principles. The nearby Neutra Office Building at twenty-three seventy-nine Glendale Boulevard was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand and four. Neutra's final project was a house in Honduras for the younger of his two sons, Nick, standing here today, completed in twenty eighteen, and the subject of the twenty-seventeen documentary short, Neutra in Roatan. On Sunday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, Dion Neutra lost his battle with cancer at the age of ninety-three. He passed away in his sleep at his Silverlake home. Dion Neutra is survived by his wife Lynn Smart Neutra, who also needs our prayers, because she's struggling at the moment with her own physical challenges, so we need to pray for Lynn. Two sons, Raymond, who isn't with us today, but Nick, who is, two grandchildren, one great-grandchild, and two stepchildren from a previous marriage. So today, we adjourn in his honor. May he rest in peace, and we know that his legacy will last into infinity in Silverlake and the city of Los Angeles. And Nick, thank you for joining us for this adjourning motion for your father, he was a great man.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Any others? Mr. Wesson.
Mr. President and members, I wanted to just, for a little while, go back to Pastor Williams, E.L. Williams. And I know that Mr. Harris Dawson was very eloquent in highlighting the accomplishments and the commitments of this great man, but losing him, for me, was very personal. He was a family friend. He was a phenomenal human being, but it was his wife that almost thirty-nine years ago introduced me to my wife. And so, I jokingly tell her on a regular basis that she changed my life. I saw this thin woman walking around the Hall of Administration, and I didn't know who she was, and it was Pastor Williams' wife that took me to every floor. Every floor in the county building, and she would go into the office and she'd say, do you see her? Is she one of these? And the ladies would walk around like, what the heck? So we do every floor in the Hall of Administration and did not find my wife. I had described her in detail to Yvonne. We go back to Yvonne's office, where I am just unbelievably depressed, because I told her that, for me, it was love at first sight, and I was going to marry this woman that now was lost to me. We sit down at Yvonne's desk, and I look up, and my wife works right next to her. I said, now, you've taken me through every building, and so that's how we met. So, they are a phenomenal family, and so as we adjourn in the memory of this great man, I want us to carry in our thoughts his great partner, who, if it wasn't for her, I would not have had almost thirty-nine years of marital bliss. Very few of us get to love only one woman their entire life, and I'm one of those, so I owe that to this family, and he will be sorely missed.
It's a great tribute to the pastor. There's a dating app for that now, Mr. Wesson. Just to let you know. With that, we are now adjourned, let us go forth and serve the people of the city of Los Angeles.[1611.16]